Regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors for Monday, December 7th, 2020. And we can go ahead and start with the normal introduction to a virtual meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the members of the board, staff, and the general public for joining us this evening. This is the December 7th regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting's been advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a virtual meeting conducted using the Zoom telemeeting platform. Additionally, the Township's Conference Bridge is currently being made available for anybody that wishes to join by phone. That can be accessed by dialing the Township's main line at 814-238-4651 and entering extension 3799 when prompted. If you're joining the Zoom meeting tonight as a member of the public or as an agent to speak on behalf of an agenda item, I just ask that you enter your name, municipality of residence, and if applicable, the topic you wish to speak about, excuse me, using the chat feature located beneath the word bubble at the bottom of your screen. Prior to commencing the meeting, I just have a few short procedural items to cover. First, as I said earlier, this meeting is structured as a virtual meeting. It's a webinar format, meaning that attendees will not be permitted to speak unless acknowledged by the chairman and enabled by the host, which is myself. I will provide instructions on how the public can engage and speak on any agenda item at the appropriate time. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes can accurately reflect the action taken. And then finally, I'd like to take a roll call of the Board of Supervisors to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the Zoom meeting format. Please indicate you're here when your name is called. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Ninni?
Here.
Mr. Metrak?
Here.
Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda will be citizens' input for anything that is not on the agenda. So if anyone cares to comment on anything additional, this will be the time. If you could just indicate through the chat. And I'm seeing none.
I don't see any hands.
Okay.
Oh, I do have a hand up, Mr. Chairman. Wes and Christine Gleeb all, you should be able to talk.
I can talk.
Yes, you can.
All right, this is Wes Gleeb, 115 North Butts. I have a project across the street from me that I wanted to address. It's 1004 College Avenue, West College Avenue, and it's slated to be a brew pub, which has a certain exciting aspect to it. What I would like to comment on is I've talked to Jenna and I've talked to Jeff, and I disagree with both of them about the terms of minor overration plan. I think that there's so many things that need to be considered with this, with this plan, this site, that it should go through the normal Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. That's my, that's my primary message. I could get into the weeds and talk about details, but I'm hoping that the board will either contact me or talk to each other about getting this off of minor overration and onto a normal review instead of what it is. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Wes. Well, I'm sure we'll be seeing that coming up at some point, so. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the November 16th Board of Supervisors regular meeting and the special meetings in November 10th, 11th, and 17th.
This is happy. I move that we approve the minutes from November 16th the special session, work sessions.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Laura.
Are there any corrections or comments? Saying none, all in favor? Please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Next is COVID-19 response report from Dave Pivalka, the Township Manager.
Thank you and good evening. I have a few local and regional updates to provide with my report. On any regional update, of course, more detail can be found by visiting the Center Region Ready Facebook page or the Cog website at cr cog.net. We also have information available at the Township's website and the State College Borough Coronavirus Portal, which can be accessed from their main page as well. Township administrative offices remain closed to the general public until further notice. Staff is shifting between in-person and remote work as we are able in order to limit in-person interaction and provide a safe working environment. We remain accessible to the public as needed through virtual meetings and scheduled appointments. The police lobby remains open to the general public for walk-in traffic Monday through Friday during normal business hours. Public is still encouraged to schedule appointments or have virtual meetings with police staff if possible. Countywide, there have been over 6,500 confirmed cases and 48,500 negative cases reported in the State College Borough COVID-19 dashboard and reaffirmed by the Pennsylvania Department of Health. There have been 79 deaths attributable to the virus in the county. A 16801 zip code continues to report the largest number of cases in Center County. In Pennsylvania, the confirmed number of cases has reached over 410,000 as of December 5th. And I know there's been some more recent data that was published since I wrote this this morning. More information on local conditions and response efforts can be found on State College Borough and Ferguson Township websites. Trending of the virus continues to be alarming, and as a result, Pennsylvania's Department of Health has issued a new guidance on travel restrictions for the coming holiday season. Primarily, all travelers over age 11 entering Pennsylvania from locations outside the Commonwealth without testing are required to produce, excuse me, are required to produce evidence of a negative COVID-19 test or quarantine for 10 days without testing or seven days with a negative test on or after the fifth day of quarantine. If a traveler is not able to or elects not to get a test, they must quarantine for 10 days after entering the state. There are several exemptions to this requirement, which are further defined on the Pennsylvania Department of Health's website at health.p-a.gov, including those traveling for work, individuals who travel outside the Commonwealth for less than 24 hours, and those traveling for medical or military purposes. As always, I'd like to conclude my report by thanking the residents and business owners in the township for your patience and understanding as we recover from this unprecedented crisis. I encourage all residents to stay safe during this holiday season and adhere to all state and local guidelines if traveling. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to respond to them.
Well, I didn't have a question, but I just had a comment I wanted to make because I was doing some, in the middle of an argument with a friend the other day about the extent of COVID in the State College area. I did some looking at numbers, and I think the latest number from the Department of Health was about 6,900 cases in Center County. And of those, about 5,000 were Penn State tests, which would be Penn State students. And so there are only about 1,900 outside of that group, and 800 of those are in Belfont and about 400 in Tyrone, as well as other areas around the county. So I think that our local ordinances and the fact that people are adhering to them and wearing masks has really made a big difference here because I, I think the numbers are showing that State College is doing better than areas around State College, even though we did have the students here, so. It's just, I, I think, I think that we were, we did well to jump into things at the beginning, and the people have got on board with it, so. I'm glad to see it. And I didn't convince my friend of that, so. Lisa?
Steve, I'll just say that our SCASD State College Area School District Representative at the General Forum Meeting conveyed as much at the last meeting that, you know, the, the spread has been, while it's there, it's been maybe lower than many expected in the schools, a lot due to the masking in the schools and, and I think due to the local ordinances too and people following them.
Anything else? Any questions, comments? Okay, saying none, we'll move on to the Center Area Transportation Authority as a report. Bruce Donovan is here for that.
Bring, bring Bruce in here. Hopefully, we've got the technical issues worked out.
Hear me, David?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, first of all, let me thank you for inviting CADA to do our presentation tonight before you. Just like all of you know, COVID-19 has had a dramatic impact on, on CADA. If you, if you receive the letter and the, that Luana sent out prior back on November 16th, you can see that, beginning in March, as we started to see COVID-19 and the regulations that the governor put out, CADA has been working diligently through, since that time period on multiple levels of service to maintain safety and to meet the needs of our patron. Safety being the primary, our primary goal was to make sure we had enough buses on the street that we could keep some social distancing and also meet those needs. I can tell you as a member of CADA's executive team that sometimes these service changes, there would be multiple service changes in a week, especially during the early days as we tried to meet the needs of the governor and the Health Department orders. At the same time, we were running our pilot program for microtransit. And, and we knew going into that program that should it become permanent, then we were going to have to revisit at some point in time the CADA formula that we currently use for both our member municipalities and also those who contract because it, there's a reliance on miles, and we were taking miles off of the fixed bus routes and putting them on microtransit. Unfortunately, as we moved into COVID, COVID with, with the many various service changes we've had to make and the fact that we are, microtransit's still in a pilot stage, we're still trying to figure out the best way to capture the impacts of microtransit. And will microtransit become a permanent addition to the CADA portfolio of modes of, of transit? I know Luana has spoken with the municipal managers over the past several weeks. Just to give you a little background, the Federal Transit Administration has made the decision based because of COVID-19 and its impact on the transit agencies. For the next two years, they're going to use our 2018, 2019 data for our funding levels because there'll be such an impact on both ridership and miles that in order to keep transit healthy, they're gonna, they're going to maintain those, those numbers that we accumulated during those years. So one of the things that CADA is recommending is that our local match shares use the same formula, that we basically a status quo with our 2018, 2019 numbers that we, that the CADA formula has, and that we increase, we just do a 5% increase for each municipality to include our funding partner, Penn State University. We, we did run a, a, a formula using microtransit, and one of the things we found was it, it, it really caused large spikes within our member municipalities fare shares. So in order to be able to maintain a, a level, more of a level playing field, one of the things we're recommending is maintain our 2018, 2019 levels plus the 5% that the state requires. And please understand that, as you know, the, the local match share is actually a Pennsylvania act, and the act requires us to collect, the, the, the member municipalities and the contracted municipalities continue to take a 5% increase each year until we reach that 15% threshold of our state funding. And, and of course, we are nowhere close to being at the 15% mark. We're closer to somewhere right around 8% right now. So that's what we are, we're coming to you as the board, recommending that for your 2021, 2022 share, that we just, we take the share you paid for 2021, increase it by 5% and continue, continue on that way so that as we move forward and hopefully our ridership comes back and we're able to, to increase our service levels again. Because right now, we're down about 43% on service. We've cut about 43% of the service due to a lack of ridership. Even, and, you know, we cut, we cut service over at Penn State, and we've cut some service out in the municipalities on those, on those routes where there, there just wasn't enough ridership to justify the cost of running a fixed route bus. We continue to look at other options where we have, where, where we have cut fixed route and we had, we had citizens of municipalities who absolutely counted on CADA to get to work. We've made arrangements for that for them to give them an opportunity to find other means of, of transportation. So we're, we're hoping that your local match, that, that as a board, you will accept that premise that we use the 2018, 2019 numbers and that we just do a 5% increase for all member municipalities and contracted municipalities for 2021, 2022.
Okay, thanks, Bruce.
Thank you, sir.
The, does, any board members have any questions for Bruce or? Laura?
Thank you very much for that presentation. That is very helpful. I do just have one question that relates to the passes, I believe. I'm not sure really what the program is called, but where apartments buy passes or riderships for their residents? Is that something that that revenue has stayed steady? And where does that come into play in terms of CADA's budget? Thank you.
Ma'am, no, it has not. Our, in a normal year, CADA's fair revenue, which is, includes individual fares, it includes PSU contract services, the apartment ride passes. We actually recover about between 45 and 48% of our budget, which is really a, i- if you look at most transit agencies, we are well above what most transit agencies are getting back from their fares. For this budget year, we are only recovering about 28 to 29% of fair revenue that we had budgeted. So if I can take and compare this year's revenues with last year's revenues, full, full year, we're down 71% in the fair revenue. And a large majority of that is Penn State contract, the apartment complexes, and Penn State's, what they call their ride share program, where they actually pay for the passes for their employees, and that has to do with their parking mitigation and trying to keep traffic off of the university. So we're down about 71% of our fair revenue. Now fortunately, we did get CARES Act money. And that is helping us get through the current COVID crisis because without that CARES Act money, CADA would probably have had to shut down services by the end of this year. So it's the CARES Acts, our CARES Acts money is supplementing what we used to get in fair revenue. So no, the apartment complexes are nowhere close to what they used to be.
Thank you very much for that information.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else?
Yeah. So how easy or hard is it to, like, right, right now, there is possibly not enough ridership and, you know, we might be, you know, we might not, we might need to have scaled down. You said that you're scaled out the operations, but we might need to scale down to an extent and then ramp up later on. So how easy is it to scale down and ramp up things? And does that affect your budgets and so on?
Well, it, we, CADA is a fairly nimble transit system. So we can, we can scale up, ramp up, and scale back fairly quickly. Now, when I say that, obviously, one of the things we look at when we are talking about scaling back is what is the impact on the community? What is the impact on CADA's workforce? How, and so when we scale back, normally, within a week to 10 days, we can scale the service back. One of the things we try, we, we, we feel like we're, we have to do is when we get ready to scale back service, is get information out to the community. Because, especially people who count on CADA as their main transportation mode. So we're not going to scale back overnight because we want to get the community information out there because people will need to make, some people will need to make other arrangements. We also want to make sure that our member municipalities and our contracted municipalities get notice that we are looking at scaling back a particular service in CADA because obviously, we are here to serve community. Our communities are important to us. We want to make sure that whatever decisions are made, we, we want to look and see what is the overall impact. What's the impact? It's because if you work at Walmart and CADA is your only way to work, then we need to give you time to possibly make other arrangements if we're going to cut service on a particular route. We also, because we, we are a unionized workforce, we also have to give our union and our workers a certain amount of notice. So, but generally, within seven to 10 days, we can either ramp up or we can scale back. And ramping up, it's just generally just a, a matter of notifying our furloughed employees that we, they're, they're coming back to work. And then getting the planning schedules out, which drivers are going to get which route because they have to bid on the routes under the union contract. So we can do it, we're fairly nimble. It's not a third or a 60-day, 60-day process. Chris Jordan, which I think most of you probably know, is ve- is very adept at getting these new plans and schedules on the street so that the operation side can then knows how many drivers they need to call back or how many drivers are going to be laid off. You know, it's, it's, if you look at CADA through the end of October, we have about 12% of our ridership using the service right now. That's, you know, again, it's sustainable only because of the federal and state money we have right now. I will tell you that it is the executive, the, our board and the executive management's desires to keep as much service on the street as financially responsible. Again, you can't, you, you can't run buses that don't have ridership. But by the same token, you can't cut service and dramatically affect the communities that you're, you're here to support. And hopefully, sir, that is a long answer for a short question.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand that. I mean, so the, the objective was to figure out like how much, you know, the, the expenses and like, I, I think I understand that without the subsidies that we are getting from the CARES Act and so on, it would be difficult. You know, a- as you also understand that the townships and local governments are also tight on their budgets. So this is why I'm asking because it's a, you know, it might look like 5% and a small amount, but it becomes a, something else needs to be cut or adjusted to make things fit. So that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, yes, sir. And that's why I tried to, that's why I, I, one of the statements I made was, unfortunately, the 5% increase in the local match is, is not a CADA option. It's, it is a state regulation that we have to increase it every year by 5% until we reach that 15% threshold of the state operating assistance. So it's, it's not CADA coming out saying we need, we, we want a 5%, it's the state coming to CADA saying you have to have a 5%. And figure out, so CADA's only, what CADA tries to do is through using our CADA formula is spread our local match share over and equitably over both our member municipalities and our contracted municipalities. And because we don't have solid numbers since March as far as with all the service changes and that, that's why we're saying let's use the 2018, 2019. But let's go back to a normal time, and this is what your increase was. So we're trying to base it on what would a, a normal year look like for our member municipalities and our contracted municipalities? And, and we have to go back prior to our, our current fiscal year to do that.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I'm, I'm sure we'll be talking about this in our, our regular agenda item at some point, but at this point, thanks for your presentation and bringing us the request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Have a great evening and stay safe.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Ferguson Township 2020 Third Quarter Financial Report from Eric Henderson.
Eric, you got to unmute, bud. And we're seeing your screensaver, your background, not the, the PowerPoint. It's a nice view.
Yep.
But I don't think it's what you're trying to show us.
I'm sorry. It worked great until I tried to share it on here. Share screen. Share screen. Nice to see David.
Yeah, you might have just had the wrong screen assigned, Eric.
Well, you would think, and if I go to the PowerPoint. There we go.
There we go.
All right. So I'd like to present, thanks Dave, I'd like to present to the board the third quarter financial report. Ending September thirtieth. So if you look at the cash balances for the last three years at the end of the third quarter. All in all, it looks like the cash is increasing. As you can see, the capital projects funds, which are the, have dropped dramatically made up for the bond issue in twenty twenty. For the maintenance building. General fund revenue going up slightly, but pretty stable. Now, this is a confusing slide, I'll admit that. Whatever it represents is a change in fund balances based upon revenues and expenditures. So if you take the revenues minus the expenditures, whatever that change is, is what you see on the graph. So obviously, the debt service money has dropped. Because we're spending the bond issue that we received in late twenty nineteen. Capital projects has a V shape. And that has to do with twenty nineteen spending on the administration building and any other cash spending. Unrelated to the bond issue. And the general fund money, it looks like a top pretty much, up and back down again. So that stays. Ended up pretty much the same as twenty eighteen. And then the gray line, which is the special revenues, basically liquid fuels money, makes up the majority of that. It was pretty stable. Looking at the general fund, separating revenues from the expenditures, you can see that the income taxes or the taxes in general. Make up eighty-five or eighty-some percent of the total revenue. With a mix of other items such as grants and interest and other permits and so forth. Some state funding. On the expenditure side, it's a relatively mix. With the, one of the larger items being the transfers from the general fund to other funds. And then you see that the public safety is in there. That's pretty stable. Employee benefits, I actually dropped. That's the darker red, darker orange, I would say, burnt orange. Total of about nine million in expenditures. Tax revenue. You can see the income taxes, which is the bright orange, is actually increasing slightly. And transfer taxes have dropped somewhat. They're more consistent with twenty nineteen than they were twenty eighteen. Total revenue is very similar to twenty eighteen. About eight million dollars. And then looking at budget to actual for the revenues for the general fund. Twenty twenty amounts are approximately seven hundred thousand dollars less than last year so far. So good at nine point eight, eight million in twenty nineteen versus nine point one million in twenty twenty. That's definitely COVID related, most likely. The expenditures are amazingly consistent. The actual numbers are amazingly consistent relative to the budget. The budget is increasing, but the, the actual spending is relatively stable from prior years. The capital funds, the group of all the different capital funds. You can see the capital reserve money, revenues coming in. That's basically the money from the bond for this year. Going from the general obligation account to the capital reserve fund to pay for a maintenance building. And on the expenditure side, you see the same thing, the, the large yellow. Is the spending on the, on the maintenance facility. With the balance made up of TIF road projects. Special revenue funds skewed entirely by the liquid fuels money. The yellow is all liquid fuels money and you see the small amounts for us, the hydrant and the streetlight amount of funds. You can see, we're using more and more of the liquid fuels fund balance. And we're also getting more money from the state. Debt service fund. Relates to transfers from the cap, from, to the capital reserve expenditure. This big jump in twenty twenty expenditures is the money going to the capital reserve for the public works building. And the other, on the revenue side is, is transfers from the general fund over to the general, the general obligation fund. And the bond issue in twenty twenty. So I take that back. The bond issue was not. Received yet at that point. Capital equipment, there wasn't a whole lot, couple items and obviously you're spending on the building. And we did buy two police cars for seventy-five thousand. Capital projects spent three hundred fifty-two thousand on micro surfacing. The street project more makes up several different streets, eight hundred seventy-two thousand. That's a relatively large project. Sidewalk and handicap ramps, seventy-one and a half thousand. McWilliams ag easements, fifteen thousand. Stormwater projects, thirty-eight thousand, suburban park, twenty thousand. And this is just the third quarter. And hopefully, if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Eric? Seeing none. Thanks, Eric. And stay around because next item on the agenda. Is the public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty-one annual operating budget. I guess Dave's going to introduce that and then we'll be back to Eric again.
Yes, sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As provided for under Article Seven of the Home Rule Charter. I am very pleased to present to the board and the public the proposed Ferguson Township annual operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Before turning it over to Eric Anderson, Finance Director, to review the proposed budget, I just have a few introductory comments and acknowledgements. First, I would like to express my sincere appreciation to the staff and the Board of Supervisors for the many hours spent preparing this document. Your hard work and dedication to your fiduciary responsibility has produced a budget. That will continue to serve the needs of our residents and advance the mission and values of Ferguson Township. While remaining fiscally strong and resilient for the times ahead. I don't need to remind anybody here of the unique challenges and obstacles that met us as a community in twenty twenty. And the budget preparation process was reflective of the uncertainty that lies ahead. As is commonly the case, the twenty twenty-one operating budget is not balanced. It reflects a deficit in the general fund of one million, four hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Accumulated fund balance will be used to account for the difference. And the year-end projected general fund balance remains strong at six million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars. Or forty-eight percent of the projected expenditures. Township closely monitors this deficit throughout the year and modifies its expenditures to reflect the trends and efficiency of operations. It is common that the projected deficit is significantly reduced or entirely eliminated through sound administration and fiscal oversight throughout the budgeted year. The proposed twenty twenty-one operating budget continues to advance an ambitious agenda while also acknowledging the challenges before us as a community. Major projects, including the design of the Park Hills Drainage Way, Phase One development of Suburban Park. And the construction of a traffic signal at Science Park Road and Sandy Drive remain on the horizon. While others, including the Northland Area Transportation Improvements, engaging a consultant to amend the Terra Streetscape District. Building improvements and road projects have been deferred to future program years. The budget does not reflect the imposition of a stormwater management utility fee. However, it does segregate those costs in a new fund, Fund Twenty. So that the cost center can be appropriately monitored and the board can make an informed decision. On the proposed fee when it's presented for public hearing in February of twenty twenty-one. The budget also includes a new category of committed fund balance to account for sinking funds for building maintenance and equipment replacement. This commitment will better ensure that the funds are available when needed for their stated purpose. This evening, the board is asked to consider adopting the proposed twenty twenty-one operating budget. Should the board modify the proposed budget tonight, the changes will be updated in a document presented for final adoption by resolution on December fourteenth. Changes that have been reviewed and approved by the board at the November's tenth, eleventh and seventeenth special meetings. Are reflected in the document that's been made available for public inspection. I'll now ask Eric Anderson to review those changes in greater detail and fill in any blanks that I may have missed before turning it back over to the chairman. Thanks, Eric.
Hey Dave, thank you. I assume everybody can see that. What, what I'm going to discuss tonight is the final budget after the board had made changes. And it's a shorter PowerPoint than a previous, but I will highlight certain items. First of all, the township is financially healthy. It has healthy fund balances. The only direct debt for the township is for the public works facility. That is only used for capital spending. And in twenty nineteen, the township received the highest bond rating available, AAA. Township has clean annual audit, financial audits every year. Township has received budget awards every year since two thousand and twelve. The township follows the GFOA, Government Finance Officers' Association Budgeting Best Practices. And we budget conservatively. Looking at the twenty twenty-one budget summary by fund type. Guys can take a moment to review that. You can see that general fund reason one point four million, one point five million in. Fund balance to, to balance the fund. Same with the capital project and the debt service deficits, well, in fact, they're all deficits. The debt service is obviously related to the bond monies and special revenue. So we started at seventeen million and we're going to end up with twelve point four. Here's a general fund balance trend going back to twenty sixteen. You can see the increase, 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 twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one are both estimates. We don't know what the actual dollars are going to be at this point. So they're subject to change. Here's what we're looking at is capital projects for twenty twenty-one. TIF, one point seven, seven million. Stormwater, one point two million. Park projects, one point two million. Almost two million on a building. Liquid fuels. Small amount admin, police equipment is generally vehicles. In public works, typically vehicles as well. Township debt, township TIP has currently a six point eight, four or five million in direct bonded debt, term of twenty-five years. The new public works facility will require about four hundred thousand dollars in debt service annually. Approximately three percent of the general fund revenues or expenditures, I'm sorry, well under the recommended maximum of ten percent. Stormwater fund is a new fund in twenty twenty-one, managed stormwater mitigation. Fund accounts for the Chesapeake Bay pollution reduction requirements. Budget includes eight hundred and eighty-one thousand funding from the general fund and three hundred and forty thousand from the transportation improvement fund. The expenses include proportional salaries from the general fund. So some of the salaries that were originally accounted for in the general fund are going to be accounted for in the stormwater fund. And the projects include two hundred ninety-eight thousand pipe relining and forty-two thousand for replacing inlet on Davis Char Drive. Here are the changes from the, the board meetings. Reduce support Matilda EMS from, from thirty-five hundred to three thousand. Remove the consultant for the Terra Streetscape District, thirty-five thousand. Remove the bike path signage for two thousand. Reduce spectator recreation from twelve to six thousand. Reduce the economic development from forty to fifteen thousand. Remove the salary market adjustment of eighty thousand. Remove the general fund transfer to ag preservation of fifty thousand. That's not actually a good expense. That's just a, a transfer from one fund to another. And the reason we were able to do that is because of the next item, which is removing the ag easement purchase of thirty-three nine. Continuing on, remove the exterior painting on the administration building, saving fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The rubber roof replacement, seventy-six, six fifty. Remove the police administration vehicle and related electronics, thirty-five thousand savings. Also remove the Northland Mobility sinking fond of two hundred and fifty thousand. Attack buggy, eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four. Trash receptacle program, ten thousand. And we added twenty-five thousand for open space plan. Total change without counting that fifty thousand dollar transfer, the savings of five hundred and sixty-three thousand, twenty-four dollars. And there you go. There she be, if there's any questions.
Yeah, this is a public hearing. So first, I'll see if the board has any specific questions as far as what Eric just presented. If not, we'll go to the, any public comment that we have. And then I'll go with the motion after that. So first to be if there are any board questions for Eric. I think it was pretty straightforward from our meeting, so. So at this point, we'll take any public comment or questions.
Out here on the, if anybody wishes to provide comment, if you could just indicate by using the hand raise feature. I can acknowledge your request to speak and convey it to the chair. Hands raised on the part of attendees.
Okay, if we don't have any at this time, then I'd ask the board for a motion. Lisa.
Um, I do have a few questions. I was anticipating more comments. I kind of gather my, take a minute and gather my questions based on what Eric said. But if not, can I go ahead and ask my couple of questions or no?
Well, why don't we do a motion first and then have the discussion at this point?
I Laura moved that the Board of Supervisors approve the proposed twenty twenty-one annual operating budget. And authorize a public hearing on the final adoption of the budget for December fourteenth, twenty twenty.
This is Patty, I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Now, any board discussion or questions, comments? So Lisa.
Yeah, I don't need to go first if somebody else has some.
Well, you, you're first to mention you had some, so.
Very well. So Eric, the chart that had the board changes on it, is there something else? That you can point to that had other changes? Because there were a few that I was looking for that I didn't see.
Those are the ones that I picked up from the board meeting when.
The only thing not reflected are inter-fund transfers, which the board gave discretion to the manager and the finance director to modify based on the other amendments. Was there something specifically that wasn't included?
What I was looking for. Was, well, one was the storm, in the stormwater fund, the engineer. I, it was slated to go from part-time to full-time and then I thought that was next. That was not.
We, we left that as a part-time position for twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, so there was no change.
No change. It had been presented, proposed as a, as a part-time position.
Okay. And then also there was, this wasn't a, this was not a board. And then also there was, this wasn't a, this was not a board change, but this was a change that I just wanted to note. So in the stormwater fund, it looked like the grant for
200,000.
Sorry, the DCNR grant?
The 200,000.
The Department of Environmental Protection, well, actually, I think it was a, this is a federal grant, national.
Right.
I can't remember the program, the $200,000 construction. National Fish and Wildlife, there you go. Thanks, thanks, Ron. Was removed.
Right, okay, and so that increased the transfer from the general fund by 200,000.
That's correct. So the, the grant funding while still available is to be used for construction of the project, which we don't anticipate commencing until fiscal year 2022. So we had to cover the cost for design and permitting in fiscal year 2021, which is not going to be offset by the grant award.
Okay. So was that not something we needed to discuss then?
No, the, the grant, I mean, if, if the board, the only alternative would be for the board to make another decision relative to the project. If you want to proceed with the Park Hills Drainage Way design and construction, we need to keep the budget the way it's presented. The grant funding is still going to be available. The township is still gonna be recipient of those funds. However, we're not gonna receive them until 2022, and the way we would account for those funds is we would not reflect those on the revenue side of things until we actually were receiving the money.
And would we certainly still receive that grant, no matter how that project was? If, if there was some reimagining going into designing that project, is that grant still a certainty?
No.
Not necessarily, no.
No, if the board, if the board opts to take a different approach to the Park Hills Drainage Way project, meaning if you were to opt for a segmented approach to construction, or perhaps a different design that were less costly, it certainly could have an impact on the grant award, not only the amount, but the fiscal year that we receive the funds. And, you know, whether or not we, we are still eligible, quite frankly. The grant was awarded, predicated on the design that was presented to the program.
Okay, I mean, I think that that's a pretty significant change, given that we discussed looking at that project in a new light. The budget for that project has expanded significantly over the past year. And over the past few years since it started being discussed, so so I'm concerned about that. And then I just, I, I want to ask Erica a question unrelated to that. In the summary by fund, up in the beginning, the table that has, yeah, so some of the actual numbers for 2019 changed. And this might be an accounting thing that I should know, but I wanted to ask why the actuals would change from 2019.
There was one, two items, the stormwater fund, or not the stormwater, the hydrant fund and the streetlight fund. We, there was a potential misstatement in the finances for 2019, so I caught a hold of the auditors and they're gonna make an adjustment for this year.
There were some others, so I don't know if.
The information came directly from the audit.
Right, there were, I'll see if I can get back here quickly. Pardon me while I scroll. Okay, so I don't want to get into the nitty gritty here, but there were some others that were different in the 2019 actuals, and that's what I had thought would create those differences, you know, in the, in the hydrant and the streetlight fund, because we discussed those. So maybe we can talk about this. I'm just.
If you want to send me the questions and the items you're talking about, that'd be great.
Okay, and maybe if I can find him while we're talking. Okay, there was, yeah, liquid fuels had a change in the actuals. And then there were a number, so I stopped, I stopped writing them down, so I don't know if somebody else has that comparison up that can find it. Okay, so I'll leave that at that, but.
Yeah, I would suggest for that, if, if you develop, you know, a couple of items there, Ms. Strickland, you can send those to Eric and we can reconcile the 2019 actuals that are shown in the proposed budget versus what they should be. But like Eric said, they ought to have came right from the audited statements. So unless numbers were transposed or there's a couple of items that we had to correct, they should be, they should be accurate.
Okay. All right, I'll let somebody else go if somebody else had some questions before we comment, or I could keep going.
Does anyone else have any questions? On the proposed budget at this point? Laura?
Well, I'm gonna ask my question that I asked in whatever the last meeting, which relates to the park funds, but I mean, Lisa can continue with her. I mean, we all know it's coming. We all know what's coming in my question, so you know, Lisa, if you want to put everything else out there, that's all I have for the, for the budget comment.
Okay, well, I'll end on that. I'll finish my other thought and then I'll end on that, because I had a question about the park fund too. You know, I guess I would just kind of summarize my thoughts on this. You know, back during the CIP process, when we talked about this, I think I ended it saying something to the effect of, I regretted that we didn't cut more to try to balance the budget at that time, given the situation that we're in. And I said, well, you know, we'll be looking at it more, the numbers more concretely when we are in the budget process, and now we're here and I'm more concerned than I was then. I think we have more information and while we did cut some things, you know, I was just disappointed that we didn't have more dialogue about, about this at that time. I think there was some effort made to cut certain things, but I would have just really appreciated a broader reprioritization knowing the things that we know now. So, you know, we came into this with a lot of things from the CIP over past years and didn't probably have any outlook then, this current economic downturn. I don't know how anybody could, as well as the public works building, that's three and a half million or so more than what was projected and a greater difference than what was projected just a few years ago in 2017. I think it was 2 million something back then, and that's CIP. So I think knowing these things now, and like I've already mentioned, the Park Hills Drainage Way expansion, I think that's one thing. And I think also we could add in what we just heard from Kada, seeing increased regional needs that we're going to have to respond to. You know, it's something that we couldn't, we shouldn't be ignoring, and I think that we just, we haven't had the discussion, even though we've had the time. And that's disappointing. We've projected a lower increased, increase in income tax for the year, and I, I I don't know, I just would have liked some, some broader discussion on those things. And the second thing I'll say about my concerns with this budget is the stormwater fund. Well, I think it's helpful to itemize the the expenses that were attributed to stormwater more specifically than have been done in the past. I think the way that this fund has been created in this budget does more than that, in that it's incorporating a lot of the program elements that were designed to go along with the adoption of a fee. And so while some of those things are genuinely needed, the process by which we're imposing them in this budget is concerning to me. We haven't gone through the stormwater fee discussion fully yet, yet there are elements of that program plan in the stormwater fund.
May I ask for, for an example, I don't believe we've included everything, anything that was only component of the stormwater fee in the 2021 operating budget.
Yeah, I'll just throw out a couple things like the interns, their equipment, certain projects, you know. And when we discuss this, like I already said, when we were in the CIP discussion, a lot of those things as far as road projects with the drainage designation were, it was conveyed to me that those things, yes, would be cut if there was not a fee imposed to pay for these projects. And so that really was the sense of planning that I had at the time, and that doesn't seem to have, to have played out in this. So I understand what you're saying. We had another discussion another time about the assessment increasing from the 40,000 to the 117,000 a year in this budget. You know, these are, these are singular elements of that plan, you know, we'll be going over it later in a different agenda item, so I don't think we need to get into that right now, but but I think if we had had maybe a layout of what existing stormwater costs were and that contrasted with what is in the stormwater fund, that might have been helpful to see what increases there actually are. So, like I said, it's the creation of the fund that I think is helpful in designating those expenditures and something like you know, something like the TIF where we're allocating certain resources. That was what was conveyed to me over many months when I first came on, that the reason we're in the dire situation we are with drainage is that funds weren't properly allocated to that over time, and now, and we need the fund to not only highlight the expected cost, but to segregate those funds to go toward that. I think this fund could accomplish that, but I think it is more robust than what it needed to be at this time, prior to the fee being adopted or other revenue streams coming in to fund those items. So those are my couple of concerns at this point, and I'll, I'll leave it there.
Okay. Did you say you have something about the park funds?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, we'd had a discussion about the regional capital projects funds and the the status of those balances and where those could be attributed. We got something from Eric on those, and I just wanted a little elaboration on how much money is in those funds and where it can be spent.
Thanks, that's a good background for my question too. That was really helpful information, and I did a calculation that could be wrong. So we could run over that when we're ready to talk about a potential motion. I could attempt a potential motion, and then we could talk about that, whatever the chair prefers.
I think, why don't we discuss it so that when you make the motion, we know what? Yeah, I mean, normally you would make a motion first, but we haven't really gotten into that discussion in the previous meetings, so.
Thanks. So if Eric could take it from here, that'd be great. Thanks.
Yeah, let me bring up that. I was looking for that spreadsheet.
May I just note, I'm seeing a couple of things come in through the chat and question and answer, and I should have noted this. Typically, I do in my introduction. Please refrain from using the chat or the Q and A. Those don't get monitored. It's just a difficult format to be able to kind of keep all those balls in the air. So if you do want to say something, you raise your hand when acknowledged by the chairman, I can enable you to speak. Thank you.
All right, so what I did was I went back to 2008, when that fund was actually established. And I, I looked at the audit figures and the amount of money that was deposited and by who. Included interest and any withdrawals as well. So if you look on that information I sent you, Lether deposited 1.504, 1,504,933,000. And Toll Brothers deposited 800,000. So if you add the interest to that and you take away the COG debt payments, you ended up with a balance at the end of 2019 of 1,586,733 dollars in the bank.
And somehow I, I did an equation that I ended up that 786,733 dollars were of the lesser dollars left.
Yeah, you can pretty much take the 400,000 or the 800,000 for Toll Brothers, add the interest. But then you gotta, you know, who, how do you factor in the withdrawals for the COG debt? That's, that's the variable. But if you just took the 800,000, that would be a bit, that would be money that was not related to.
That's basically the equation I did. I took I just subtracted the 800,000 from the last balance before it was deposited, I think is what I did. And then Lisa, did you ask specifically like what that fund could be used for, or what fee and lieu could be used for, or what the lesser money within that fund could be used for? Because it could be three different answers.
I was wondering what the lesser money could be used for. I think I know, and so the answer would, or my follow-up question would be, how much do we still need? How much have we paid off if that's to go to our pools debt, et cetera? How much do we need of that yet to pay off the rest of that debt?
If you'd like, I can bring, I'm gonna call him right out here. Joe Vidge alone with COG is, is on the call. He might be able to quote chapter and verse the remaining debt obligation for pool and park loan debt. He may be taking a nap, I don't know.
Matt? No, I don't sleep, you know that.
You don't sleep, I know that, that's true.
Good evening, Joe Vidge alone, Center Region COG Finance Director. In terms of the loan on the pools, the pools loan is about 446,000 dollars a year. If I pull up the summary budget, I don't, I look at the detailed budget, I'd have to go link at that to see what Ferguson's percentage is. But of that 446, 600 per year, you've got eight more years left, left on that debt service. So if I do the quick math, at eight years, in your approximately 25% I don't know exactly the number, but that's about, that's ballpark. I'm sorry, I'm working from home today and was not anticipating this. That puts the number, if my math is correct, roughly 900,000 dollars.
That, that sounds very close. Thanks, Joe. Appreciate that.
And Lisa, I think, I don't know, I said 700 and something, 786,000 that I thought was left of the lesser, so we're gonna spend all of that in regional debt in, what did you say, Joe? Seven, the next seven years? Just on pools.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta bring him back on if I may have booted him prematurely.
Booted me already. I see how you are. It's about eight years. Because the loan ends in 2028, so I'm starting in 2021 and then going forward, that's eight years.
And so my thoughts on this have been that, like typically, you take debt because you don't have the capital, so it's interesting the concept of saving a lot of money and then also taking debt and then saving that money to pay off the debt. So I think that it's, I don't know, it kind of seems a little bit counterintuitive to making your money work for you. But I do understand why we would reserve that specific lesser Halbert money that way, because that can only be used for regional regional projects or projects of regional benefit, we'll say. But for example, you know, the the pathway that, that's proposed to connect Whitehall Road Regional Park with the state land, that could be considered a regional recreational amenity. That could be considered a regional recreational amenity. So I would say that the idea that, that Halbert money has to be used for the debt of the pools. Or the debt of the parks per se. Is a little bit narrow. So. That debt is debt that we have and it's debt we're gonna pay off over time. But we can invest in other regional assets with that money. Not that I'm necessarily saying we should or shouldn't. But my thought was to take the Toll Brothers money of fee and lieu. And transfer some of that to the Park Improvement Fund, but I wanted to ask about interest bearing, so. Are both of those accounts interest bearing or accounts, whatever you call them, funds?
Funds, absolutely.
Okay.
We invest them, now I should note, I mean, it's a very conservative investment, I think. Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, we generate approximately one percent annual interest.
Yeah, one to two percent.
So we're, we're not putting them in high risk.
We have, we're required to follow the Act seventy two money, which is based on the government. Has to be subsidized by the government or, or sub, or not subsidized.
We have limitations on how we can invest. Revenue.
Gotcha. That's just like a requirement of the fee and loom money if I understood correctly, but it is.
Fee and lieu money is limited by the municipality's planning code and how it can be used to essentially develop recreational amenities that are reasonably accessible to the development that paid them. I mean, that's really all the detail that you're gonna get out of municipalities planning code. I think how you interpret that is, is the board's discretion. And I believe a point was raised earlier that investments in the regional parks program. Cover parks that are in State College Borough and reasonably accessible presumably to the Toll Brothers project. My recommendation, as I've said before, is that the. Revenue in Fund Thirty One, aside from what we presented to be transferred into Fund Thirty Four, remain there. To cover the un, the obligated regional parks debt. Primarily because of the uncertainty about Whitehall Road Regional Park and how that may or may not develop in the coming years. But of course, it's up to the board if you want to change that inter-fund transfer. To move more of the money out of Fund Thirty One and into Fund Thirty Four, you certainly can do that. We do have a hand raised in the chat too.
Yeah, but my thought on it is with some history on it, I've got. I, I think I've gone over this some of it before, but I'm not sure with everybody who's here. Is the lesser Halbert money was committed to regional recreation. And. We decided a number of years ago to use that money to pay our debt on regional recreation projects. I'm not sure I completely. Felt that was the right way to do it with some of the questions Laura's been raising, but I think it is. Is a reasonable way to spend that money in terms of what it was intended for, because it is funding the pools. Which is regional recreation. The other eight hundred thousand was money that we received as a fee and lieu. And the board decided to put it into the regional. Recreation fund because of the. Whitehall Road Regional Park being adjacent. I guess my thought is that. It really, we should treat that as fee and lieu money for parks. And I would prefer to move the whole thing into Fund Thirty One, eight hundred thousand and separate it from money that's committed to regional parks. That would be my preference. Especially if we're gonna move, if we're gonna transfer any of it, I would like to transfer it. As a lump, you know, the whole thing and just treat it as. That would then give us a fund in thirty one that could be used like as matching money for grants.
Thirty four.
Thirty four.
Thirty four, yeah. It'd give us, you know, in thirty four, it would be, give us a reserve fund. Of in lieu money that could be used. In terms of using it to pay the loans. I mean, we're gonna pay those one way or another and we're gonna pay for the park. You know, projects we have outside that one way or another. So I. I guess. I would have a question for Dave. Do you, do you see any problem that would occur if we were to do that in terms of? Where, yeah, where, where we're using the money, I think.
I don't think so. I think that the, you know, we could still, the township can still defend the argument that we're investing. In the, in a, in a amenities that are reasonably accessible to the development that paid them. I, other than the concerns that I have about the unfunded debt obligations. I don't think there's any issues with transferring more than what's proposed into Fund Thirty Four from Fund Thirty One.
Dave, I think what you're saying about unfunded debt is it's very important topic. But I don't think the solution is that. We keep all of our fee and lieu that should be going into updating playgrounds and that kind of thing. For the roller coaster ride that the cog parks debt is becoming to Ferguson Township. And I think that this board is willing to take on the difficult topic of. Addressing that head on. Instead of knowing that rainy day is coming and squirreling away this money in that manner. So I appreciate, appreciate your concern. I also have it and it's gonna come up later when we talk about Whitehall Road Regional Park. It's just. The way to manage that debt is to not incur more debt through regional parks. Not to not update our parks that need to be updated at the municipal level and so. But also it just as a piece of history, the reason I really started looking at this kind of a transfer is because it's actually false to say in the narrative. That the money that's in this fund, and if you look at the name of the fund, is for regional park amenities. So that's why I looked at separating it out. It's correct to say that about lesser Halbert. But it is incorrect to say that about the Toll Brothers money. So. I was willing to manage that. Incorrectness in any manner we could. The solution has seemed to be to come up to take an entire chunk that doesn't belong there in essence. And put it where it best fits. While completely being concerned about the runaway parks debt at the cog level. So that, that I guess is my little historical add in then.
So I note that we do have someone wants to comment. Attendees?
Sure, yes, I can bring Mark Kunkel on here.
Thank you. My historical recollection is somewhat different than what Steve Miller has of the. Dollars that were set aside from the Toll Brothers fee and lieu. And the discussion that surrounded that historically has been that those. Dollars were set aside to take care of the upcoming debt. That the township is going to have to participate in with the Whitehall Road Park improvements. You're one of five decision makers on that park and. You know, going forward, if other members are. Going to pursue the development of that park. You're going to have unfunded debt. And the intent was to be able to use those dollars for that debt service. So that the taxpayers did not have to have an increase in their taxes or additional fund transfer from the general fund. To pay for that regional debt. This essentially was, was set aside in order to. Provide Ferguson Township residents with the ability to pay that debt. Without incurring additional taxes or general fund transfer. To, to the regional parks for that debt service. So. Although they are not designated as the Hubbard lesser. Funding was designated, it was put into that fund in order to take care of. The upcoming debt service that you would have with the development of that park. And if the park's bond is somewhere in the vicinity of four or four point eight million dollars. And Joe Vigilone indicated that we have about a twenty five percent share of that total bond. That's a million two. In just principle that we're going to have to, have to pay back. So the eight hundred thousand dollars that Toll Brothers provided is not even sufficient to cover the debt that township's going to incur. With the, with Whitehall Road Regional Park. So this is kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul. In that respect that, you know, we take it out of this fund at this point in time. Use it to develop local parks. And some board down the, down the road is going to have to figure out how to pay the debt service then. Either through tax increases or general fund transfers, reduction of your fund balances, et cetera. So. Just my two cents on the historical perspective of, of why that, those dollars were put in to that regional park fund.
Thank you, Mark, but I want to be able to clarify something with that. I am not saying that we're taking, we should be taking money from Peter to pay Paul. Those were definitely your words. I think that. Ferguson Township basically invests approximately four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars, I believe. Typically every year in our parks infrastructure. I believe that's what I calculated. So whether that money is going to debt service at the regional level for regional parks. Or whether that money is going to capital costs and operational costs, parking lot replacement. These kinds of things, stormwater management at TUDAC, whether that money is going to that, it's being invested in the township. So when you're talking about tax dollars, my, my point still holds. Debt is incurred, so you don't have to increase taxes and you project out over many years that increase. What we're doing is the opposite of what the benefit of debt is when we keep it all in a chunk. So it actually makes us have to increase taxes more and that's exactly what I'm saying we can avoid. By putting that money in the capital improvement fund now, when we need it to replace dangerous playground equipment. And making that debt work for us over time. So it's, it's not about pushing it off to a future board, it's about utilizing the dollars in a better way that makes sense. So I do appreciate your concern. The concern really lies in. How willing we have been to accept debt at the regional level for these regional parks. That are very, 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 very expensive endeavors.
Oh, my response to that is that by taking that eight hundred thousand dollars and utilizing it now just accelerates. How fast you're going to expend those dollars on local parks. And by not utilizing those dollars for local parks, the board can. Moderate how quickly it needs to. Make improvements at parks that it sees needs, needs improvements. I know that every year there's dollars put aside for safety improvements. At the park, so this is not a safety improvement issue. This is more a development issue. Of how quickly you want to develop or improve. The local parks based upon maybe new master plans, et cetera. It's just a different, different thinking and philosophy of how, how to, how to manage those dollars.
Acknowledged, but it is actually a safety issue. It's come up multiple times just this year. And this board has actually requested and received from staff. Some information about playground installation and when you look across the years that various. Pieces of playground equipment were installed, they're pretty old and some we can't even find records for. So I'm anticipating a great amount of costs and I'm not anticipating just spend, spend, spend like you're. Asserting right now, but what I'm just saying is we should be able to keep up with the improvements we need to keep up with. Because we have the money for it. And we have the debt incurred already and spread out over X years.
I guess my thought is I agree with. Laura and Mark. I think it is. The. Mark is right, we would be moving money into. A fund that we might spend faster than we would if we didn't have that money there. But I think that that is. Using that money. For a purpose that fee and lieu. Should be used for. As opposed to paying the regional debt, but that's, that, that's coming from a different position on it. That's a position I've held for a while, so. Lisa.
Yeah.
Sorry, just a quick question. Is there a penalty to paying off that pool debt early? Or is there a reason why we wouldn't just pay that off?
Because five municipalities would have to agree to do that.
Oh, we can't just pay our portion?
We can, but it brings us no benefit. We might as well bank it and get the interest then because. Like Steve said, you'd have to get all the munis together to do it, I think, to reap any benefit financially.
And then I, I think you're also then doing what? Well, because, well, it doesn't, because we have a fund for the pool debt. It really doesn't mean anything one way or the other in terms of our overall.
Except for the last hundred, I forget what it was now. So when you're talking about moving that money, you would, would you be suggesting leaving? That remainder that's not covered by the lesser money?
I mean, I could, Steve, my motion was gonna be eight hundred thousand because it was cleaner. It was just straightforward. As being non-regional. That was, again, my whole focus was these are not, these are not encumbered by regional. Requirements. None of these dollars are. The eight hundred thousand, so. I was planning on just moving that out of the fund that's called regional park dollars. If, I mean, I could just make the motion and we can, if we want to continue debate.
At this point, we can make motions to amend the budget, but then go, if we make them, we go into the budget for the. The public hearing next week, so.
So I would, I would move that, so, so Dave, please correct me if what I'm saying is incorrect in terms of procedural for the budget, but. I would move that we transfer eight hundred thousand dollars out of Fund Thirty One, the Regional Park Amenities Fund. Into Fund Thirty Four, the Park Improvement Fund. For. Clarity's sake in terms of fund encumbrance.
I'll second. So with a motion and a second to make that change to the budget is. Is there any further discussion? Lisa.
Presenta can go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question, which is. The, so the, I'm trying to understand the implications of moving this fund now. So if we don't move this fund, then it could only be used for the regional parks and now we are going to be using it for. The current park improvement. Is that a correct understanding or I just got it wrong?
There, there was a resolution that was enacted by the board in, I think, two thousand and eight that is. Essentially what established Fund Thirty One and designated those funds for a specific purpose for regional facilities. Fund Thirty Four was created by the township as a separate governmental fund to segregate the cost center for parkland development. So essentially what you would be doing by increasing your transfer from, I, I believe roughly three hundred thousand, just under three hundred thousand, what's shown in the budget right now. From Fund Thirty One to Fund Thirty Four to eight hundred thousand, you'd be freeing up more of those dollars to be used for recreation amenities that aren't specifically. You'd be freeing up more of those dollars to be used for recreation amenities that aren't specifically related. To earmarked expenditures under Fund Thirty One by that resolution. You would still be obligated by fund to use them for recreational purposes, but you wouldn't be as obligated to specific. Subsets of recreational purchases as you are with Fund Thirty One as provided for by the resolution. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, a quick follow up on Fund Thirty One. How much money do we have and how much sort of encumbered debt do we have in that those allocations? So essentially, you know, that we have to pay in the future and how much money do we have before I decide whether we should move the money or not? I wanted to get those numbers.
We already have like twice the amount of COG debt than we have in that fund.
Eric, I believe you, if you do you want to pull up that spreadsheet that you shared that might be helpful?
This, I mean, Laura's supervisor didn't answer his mind for my.
Just as a ballpark, like and probably will incur more. Like. Okay, so that what, yeah, so what we're looking at now is Fund Thirty One.
About two point three million in the fund right now. Right, Eric?
One point six.
Oh, I'm sorry, that, yeah, I misspoke. The total, right, contributions to the fund between the lesser. Fee and Lou and the Toll Brothers Fee and Lou equated to approximately two point three million overall, minus what we've already incurred for regional debt service.
Right, so in this.
One point five eight six.
Yeah, under these circumstances, I'll possibly oppose them.
And so in, I'm not sure what's going on. I can't see anybody else right now for some reason. But. So in terms of the debt that we have regionally. We have pools debt and we have. Currently have Whitehall Road Regional Park debt. Theoretically, there's a question on the agenda later about. Closing out the Whitehall Road Regional Park loan and then we would only have pools debt, but.
But but there's Oak Hall too, don't forget.
Well, the, the answer that COG gave. The Oak Hall and the Whitehall Road Regional Park loan are together. And apparently the answer that the COG gave to our question, our board question was. That if we closed out the loan. We would not owe anything more on it because the money we have in either reserve or escrow, I'm not sure what the word was.
Use existing cash to pay off the debt, yeah.
Yeah. So Dave, I have a clarifying question. Dave Prabokka, are you there?
I am.
Great. Could we get, thanks, woo, that was disorienting. Thank you. I wanted to clarify something. So just because that we put that Toll Brothers Fee and Lou in that fund. Are you saying that we literally could not buy a playground out of that fund? We'd have to transfer it somewhere else first.
Well.
Because of that resolution.
The resolution. Was somewhat ambiguous, I think, but I believe the intent was, and I can try to pull it up here.
So if that's the case, I'm definitely doubling down on my. I mean. I I do not think we should restrict all that money to regional facilities only. That money was. Offsetting development of Ferguson Township to provide park amenities in the township and.
So what you'll see in the resolution under the the kind of wherefore statement here is the Regional Capital Recreation. Projects Fund was established for the purposes of meeting the township's obligation to design and develop regional recreational projects. Include aquatics facilities. So it's specifically ambiguous enough, I think. I I think reasonably based on, you know, the discussion and the context, it was earmarked toward regional debt service. But, you know, could you say that a regional recreational facility is a local park? I mean, I suppose that's, you know, that's.
Well, Dave, yeah, thank you. This kind of answers, it says here though that. Requires the establishment of a restricted fund entitled Regional Capital Recreation Projects Fund. So this fund was established based on a third party agreement that we've never seen. Called Agreement for Contribution to Regional Capital Recreation Projects in Lieu of Aquatic Facility. And that makes sense in terms of the lesser hubber and then it makes even, this is sort of like we're. Like the opposite of how we do the Tudak Trust Fund, like we wouldn't just put a bunch of money in that fund. But we're doing that in this restricted fund and I don't, yeah, I'm, I'll stick with my motion.
I'm sorry, I lost everybody. I I got kicked off and then I came back on again, so.
Well, I talked right through it, so.
Well, I, I guess my my thought on it is that I'm not convinced that. Parkland Fee and Lou money should have been added to that fund in the first place. And. The reason I second the Lord's motion is I propose that we move that from that fund. Into Parkland Fee and you lose Fee and Lou uses, so.
This would just be like if we get a lot of Fee and Lou for affordable housing. And we put it in Affordable Housing Fund. We won't be like, oh, we don't want to have that money in the fund because we might spend it. We'll be like, oh, we have to budget that on the projects that we've prioritized to spend it on and not spend it on others.
I think in practice I agree, but it's just a one off where, you know, the the practical implications of. The, you know, how much in debt we will be and so on is what worries me, yeah.
So any other comments, questions?
What I suggest if if the board is changing the transfers from Fund Thirty One to Fund Thirty Four. That you may summarily reduce transfers from the general fund to the park improvement fund by seventy five thousand. There is a seventy five thousand dollar transfer proposed from general to Fund Thirty Four. That presumably would not be needed if you're moving money out of Fund Thirty One.
Right.
Could I just amend my motion to include that? Or no, Steve? No, that's fine.
I, why don't we, why don't we, if we do make the transfer, then make a motion to make the adjustment, Dave, yes, yeah. Lisa.
Sorry, I couldn't see on that chart besides the pool debt which Joe listed out for us. What is our currently incurred other regional park debt?
Twenty six percent of four point eight million or something like that.
Yeah, I I don't know how many years it runs, but it's a.
And that's Oak Hall Hess and.
Just Oak Hall and Whitehall.
Just Oak Hall and.
Phase one severely modified.
Oh, Joe's on again, so we could get.
Yeah, it's it's Oak Hall and. Oak Hall and Whitehall only. We are ten years into the debt. It is, it's done, well, twenty thirty one will be ten years after twenty twenty one through the debt, so we're about halfway there. And the original borrowing was seven point five million dollars. But it's been negotiated, it's been renegotiated, I think, six or seven times and mainly to significant savings in municipalities. We dropped the fixed rate from. Three point one five percent to two point five nine percent and we have that fixed in through twenty twenty four. And then it goes variable rate from twenty twenty five to twenty thirty one. And that is capped at five point three five percent. And just for a little bit more discussion, part of the Whitehall Road discussion and different things coming out is. It will impact what we may or may not do with the loan because there's potential for even additional savings over the close to two million dollars. We saved by the refinancing since twenty twelve. There's additional, there's a chance for additional savings based upon our bond count, our financial advisor's opinions. Steve, you've been on those finance committee discussions.
But but the short answer on the whole thing is there's more regional park debt than there is money in that fund.
Okay, so there's nine hundred for the pools and then a million for Whitehall and Oak Hall.
Let me share my screen.
We would maybe take out Whitehall if for some reason that project.
There's the audited numbers for twenty thirteen. So our share of the pools is nine hundred and thirty eight thousand and the parks is one point.
Oh, okay, great.
Million, total of two point two million.
The only part of that that would come down is a potential decrease in the Whitehall Road Park Budget. But Oak Hall we're committed to, that's.
Money already spent.
That's money already spent, right, okay.
That's part of the same loan. That that perk loan that Eric just showed us, that's part of the same, Oak and Whitehall are part of the same thing.
Yeah, okay, I guess that's my concern is that, you know, we have have this debt. And this money here put aside to pay for it, so.
So I guess at this point, I will call for a vote. The. Motion is to transfer eight hundred thousand dollars from the Regional Parks. Capital Fund into, I'm not sure what we call the other fund.
Park Improvement Fund.
Park Improvement Fund, yes. So that that's the motion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay.
I I didn't hear Ms. Strickland's vote, I apologize.
Didn't hear you.
No, sorry.
Okay, okay, so that motion does not carry, so we don't need Dave's. Proposed motion. Is there any other? Changes to the budget that anyone wants to make a motion for at this point? If not, I will go back to the original motion, which is that we approve the proposed twenty twenty one annual operating budget. And authorizes a public hearing for the final adoption of the budget for December fourteenth, twenty twenty. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 And everyone voted, so none opposed? And, or no, this, yeah, this is.
Yeah, just a voice vote, right.
What's that?
Just a voice vote is fine.
This is just voice vote, yeah. Okay, so with that, we move on to the. Approval of the twenty twenty one Center Region Council of Governments Summary Budget.
Uh, thank you. So provided with your agenda is a link to the twenty twenty one Center Region Council of Governments Summary Budget. The item was forwarded to participating municipalities on November twenty third by the Center Region COG General Forum. Uh, the budget incorporates proposals submitted as part of the twenty twenty one COG Program Plan. And the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five COG Capital Improvement and Replacement Program. As well as revisions submitted by member municipalities in the COG Finance Committee. Boards had a chance to review the draft budget at its November sixteenth regular meeting. And the comments were forwarded to the COG Executive Director in advance of the of the deadline. There's a matrix that's included with your agenda that summarizes the responses that were provided by COG staff. And as I said earlier, a link provided with the narrative.
Thank you. So this is, whoops, I lost my place on the agenda here. This is just be a regular motion, it's not a public hearing, so. If anyone wants to make a motion, then we have discussion. And if no one else wants to, I will move that the Board of Supervisors approve the. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty one Center Region Council Government Summary Budget.
I second, present it.
Okay, so I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Laura.
Thank you, Steve. Yes, I, let's see. I have a question for Joe. From attachment. For, sorry, I have like too many tabs open. I can't tell if it's for A, B, C, or if it's just for.
I am here. I'm trying to figure out where you are though, Laura.
It's, it's in the document that is the township comments. And then the COG responses that are then highlighted in yellow. And I am on page two of four of that document. Under comment eight Ferguson Township.
I'm trying to gain, I think I know what you're talking about, but I'm trying to gain on you.
Okay.
Give me one second.
Also, I can, well, no, I can't share my screen because it's on using another computer.
I I think I'm plus. I just got it right up now.
Okay, sorry.
I beat you, Dave.
There it is, okay. So under number eight in the middle of the page. The COG response. So I'm going to ask you about the first sentence, just trying to work out some structural issues. With the budget and COG, so it says the Center Region. So our question was about formulas that use participation as part of their equation. And the response was the Center Region Park and Recreation Agency's budgets. Use the COG Modified Formula, which accounts for Half Moon Township's non-participation in the regional parks and recreation program. Yeah?
Okay.
So my understanding was the regional parks. And recreation, regional parks are what we're paying off, the whole thing we just talked about with the debt. That's for regional parks and that is what Half Moon Township does not participate in. The Center Region Park and Recreation Agency has purview over. Things like mowing municipal parks. So in this sentence, you're saying that the regional parks alone uses the COG Modified Formula. But my understanding was that's, that's not the modified formula. That's that's that loan formula that renews every X ten or year so years. My question is. What is the COG program that corresponds to the agency's budgets? That we're signatories to?
Okay, so the parks programs, they run for a number of budgets. And so for the Parks Agency, none of the Parks budgets Half Moon participates in. So if you're looking at the Parks budgets, it's C twenty Parks Operating, C twenty one. Which is Parks Capital Equipment, purchasing the mowers and the trucks and those types of things. So that is the exact same COG formula with Half Moon Township removed. And then moving forward, there are also six R funds, which are members, which are part of the Parks Program. R ten, which is Milberg Marsh Capital, R eleven, which is Milberg Marsh Operating. R twelve, which is Pools Capital, R thirteen, which is Aquatics. So those four funds, they all use the same formula associated with. The Modified COG Formula excluding Half Moon. The only difference is the Pools Capital Fund for the debt reimbursement, it is fixed in ten year increments for the loan, so it just stays fixed. It doesn't renew every year. And then you have two additional. And then you have two additional funds, one is the Active Adult Center. Which is, you look at me, you, you, Laura, right now the face you're making looks exactly like the face I made when I first asked the question when I started ten years ago, it was, wow, there's a lot here. And the Active Adult Center is based upon usage. And the regional parks is the same as a, the loan fund which is fixed every ten years. Now, Steve Miller knows this because we sent a, uh, finance committee agenda out and we've been discussing prioritization for new projects and the agenda just went out on Friday. And included in that agenda packet is actually a, um, prioritization list. For what the elected officials want to discuss and look at. And one of the items on the list would be, I'm trying to get it ready. Cog should compile a listing of the various cog formulas by fund with an explanation of how they are calculated. They shall also review the non-standard cog formula calculations and determine they should be changed. That has been given a very high priority by the finance committee going into the next year.
Thank you, that's helpful, can I, um, okay, so, thank you for all that. I think it would be greatly simplified. Greatly simplified, that is probably wrong, it would be helpful, it would be helpful if, um. So again, back to that number eight. Um, the Center Region Park and Recreation Agency's budgets. Okay, so like if I look at the code budget. I know that that corresponds to the code articles of agreement and I know that I'm, as a Ferguson Township rep, I'm, I'm. Engaged in that program. If I look at the regional parks, Whitehall has and Oak Hall. Uh, I look at the agreement for the development, planning and operation of the regional parks. And I know that certain budgets correspond to that. But when I look at the Park and Recreation Agency's budgets. I do not see anywhere in cog structure, an agreement that we have signed on to. That then results in the cog modified formula charging us X dollars for those services.
I am unaware of where you're going to, you've just left financial. And you've left, and you've entered management, I am unaware of where that's going, I can tell you since I've been here in twenty ten. We have been using these formulas and they are unchanged. And those formulas were, um, debated and resolved by the managers as to what they will be used. Uh, I believe that happened in two thousand eight for implementation, two thousand, over the period of two thousand nine to eleven in terms of smoothing in. So this was a manager decision of how we got here back in the two thousand eight, nine timeframe. And we've been using these formulas since I got here in two thousand ten.
I guess I'm, I'm not questioning the use of the formula, I'm just asking if you, like. There is clearly a space between the finances and the management then that has to be linked by that agreement.
But I, I, I think the agreement would go back to the cog articles of agreement, which specifies that participating municipalities. In a program. You know, that whether, whether municipalities are participating or not is. I mean, the, the cog.
No, it says.
Part of it was.
I just read it today, it says each program will have its own articles of agreement. So, that's just, I'm just looking for.
Okay.
It was basically, you know, it could be seen clearly here in number eight. Because there's the authority and the agency, and so I know we're all in the same room right now, so. I'll, I'll follow up with an email.
Okay.
Um, but I think, you know, it's important for us to all. It relates to our interaction as agencies, so it's, it would be an important document to be able to access, thanks.
And the document may be the two thousand eight agreement when the managers came together and developed the, the cog formula and they changed it to a third, a third, a third weighting for. Population excluding students, EIT revenue and real estate assessed value. Um, the managers came up with a formula and that was adopted by the general forum and that would be used for all programs. So, that may be the, that may be the missing link that we are looking for. In terms of that, that will be where I would recommend starting.
That'd be great if anybody wants to send that to me or to our board. Um, I don't, I don't know that it has to do with the formula, it has specifically to do with the articles of agreement. I think, but I'm willing to start wherever you think I should, for sure. Cause it's just, it's not on the cog homepage, if you go there, they have articles of agreement for every cog program except for the parks, so like. Codes there, fire protections there, um, what else, anyway, you get the picture. Thank you, that was my only question.
Okay.
Chairman, we do have two hands in the chat, uh, Eric Norenberg and Pam Salakangas.
Okay.
I've enabled them both to, to speak.
Or Pam, whoever.
Mr. Chair, I was just going to note, uh, Laura did raise the question about the agreements in an email this afternoon, so I, I do plan to. Continue the research into the question she just raised in the morning when I, back at the office, I was working at home this afternoon.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, this is Pam Salakangas, may I, may I comment?
Sure.
Yes, I, I think Joe answered your question very well, uh, Laura regarding, uh, the modified formula has been in use for several years. When those budget documents are created. I do think the modified formula came into play as well when Half Moon Township. Um, did remove itself financially. From participating in parks and recreation programs and as you know, and I know, the agreement was never updated. So that is a piece of this puzzle that we're looking at correcting. Through our comp, comp plan work, but the, but Joe answered your question very well on cog modified formula. And that it is used in our operating and capital budgets. With the exception of the Active Adult Center, which is a participation budget, so I just wanted to add that piece of historical context for Half Moon.
Pam, thank you, I just don't know what agreement you're talking about because the.
The articles of agreement for the authority include. Uh, Half Moon Township as a participating municipality. That's the agreement that was not updated when they stopped contributing financially. Uh, they are still on the books as far as that agreement goes, and that is something we talked about during comp study that needs to be updated.
Thank you, because you're really honing in on my confusion, that, those articles of agreement are with the authority. And I'm talking about the articles of agreement that are with cog and it's. Thank you for that because it's a really important distinction because the only way for our participating municipa, like if we want to. Pull out of that agreement, it's the cog agreement we're pulling out of and the authority. So those, there's two agreements that. Would be in place, but that's, you're honing in exactly on my confusion, thank you.
But, but I think actually we're getting pretty far off the budget right now.
We are.
So I, I'd like to pull it back to the, the cog budget, if there's any questions.
It is related though, Steve, because there's that confusion about. I mean, the R budget, I've always been told is an authority budget and then we're hearing articles of agreement of an authority cover C budgets and it's really just. A mess, so.
No, I, I, I understand your point there, but in terms of the twenty twenty one budget, I think there are questions. That go beyond the twenty one, twenty one budget. That. We can discuss.
Yes.
But for now, I think I'd like to pull it back to the, the motion. And see if there's any questions on. On that one at this point. If not, I would call for vote on the motion to approve the twenty twenty one Center Region Council of Governments Summary Budget. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, that brings us to the Stormwater Management Utility Fee Program and Level of Service Discussion.
Thank you, I'm going to ask Dave to introduce that one and we have Elizabeth Treadway, uh, Wood, our consultant to assist in the fee analysis. Uh, on the call tonight as well as Ron Seibert, Township Engineer, so go ahead, Dave.
Good evening, thanks, Dave. Um, as noted in your packet in the narrative, tonight we planned on focusing on. Talking about two, maybe three items, uh, two of them being the program level and the level of service. So just as a way of, uh, introduction. During the phase one part of the stormwater fee study, uh, there was quite a bit of discussion. Uh, between staff, the consultant, the stormwater advisory committee. About what are the services that the Public Works Department currently performs? In, in the area of stormwater management and what do we think? We're supposed to perform or what are we being asked to perform and how do those two match up? So, what we do and what we think we are being asked to do is what we're calling the level of service. And so that level of service was then transformed into work elements that included. Tasks and persons, uh, needed to perform work. Let me, let me back up, I guess, first and say that the first table that was developed is really a list of elements of the program, so these are the things that we think we want. Public Works to perform in the area of stormwater. And then the second table took that list and broke it into, um. Tasks that indicate manpower, equipment, materials, projects, uh, needed to. Achieve that level of service. And then the next thing that was done is there were costs assigned to that and then those costs were used to develop a fee. With the meter being impervious area, so I can go to the first. Um, table, a- and, and Mr. Chairman, if that's all right in terms of an introduction, also going through the two tables. Um, I can give an overview or we can pause and ask questions as we go, whatever seems to work, so I'll start by sharing my screen. Can you see a screen, draft stormwater program implementation schedule?
Yep.
Okay. This is broken into some categories, the first being infrastructure inspection and assessment. Researching what BMPs basins, uh, we have in the township and updating an inventory. Inspecting and developing an inventory of our, uh, thousands of inlets. CCTV is closed circuit television, so video assessing pipes. Rating them, so we have an understanding of the pipes in our system and the condition. To do that, it's often necessary to clean the pipes, so often we price it out as, uh, cleaning and videoing. That also includes a condition assessment of pipes and culverts on the western end of the township. We looked at item four, staffing. Item five is more of a long-range program development. Item six is, um. Public Works Maintenance Workers to address. These issues and it included two more, uh, full-time road workers for stormwater work. Maintaining a plan for above-ground, uh, system repairs, establishing priorities. Establishing protocols for inspections. Evaluating staffing needs. Preparing a system-wide stormwater management plan later, in later years of the program. Again, addressing above-ground infrastructure, namely basins, channels. Maintaining a pipe inspection program. Another, uh, high-level master plan evaluation of strategies, additional opportunities. Then the other two categories, uh, B and C. B is related to our municipal separate storm sewer permit, it's really the six measurable goals in our permit that are just listed out. Saying we need to comply with it and we need to do something, you know, every year. So there's, there's really nothing new there. Item C, capital improvement. Item one. Projects related to the Chesapeake Bay Pollute Reduction Plan, which is part of our municipal separate storm sewer permit. Park Hills Drainage Improvement Project. Lining, uh, corrugated metal pipes, repairing stormwater inlets. And establishing a partnership program to assist private entities with stormwater issues on private property. That, um, have commingled private and public stormwater. So. This is what was then used to develop the next table, which has costs associated with it. So maybe I'll just pause there and are, are there any questions on, on this? Table, I know they're related, so you can let me know if you'd like me to move to the next table.
And if any board members have any questions, just speak up, because I can't see everybody right now, so.
So that table was then used to develop this table. This table is broken down into, um, operating costs, um, capital costs. Top left portion of this table, these are operating costs. That are based on. The e, existing costs or proj, or estimated cost, so. What we did was we went through, we looked through the, excuse me, the foreman logs. And looked at all our projects, added up the number of hours, uh, attributed to, you know, each type of maintenance activity. Assigned a cost to the number of hours for the equipment, for personnel. And then for office persons, we used a percentage like five percent or ten percent of someone's time. So that got you time, uh, that got you labor and equipment costs. Those were, and those were direct, um, or those are the personnel costs, then we had. Uh, other consumable costs, MS four-related activities. And those items totaled the three hundred and eighty thousand. And if we needed to drill down a little bit deeper, there's a little bit of backup I have, um. So then the next part of this would be new operational costs, the first line item, let's see if I'm cutting off, and no, no. All right, so this line here would be the conversion of a part-time and a full-time stormwater engineer to manage. Stormwater issues and to manage the program. Two road workers to augment the labor force. Two interns to help with condition assessments. This is a placeholder for, you know, additional materials, we already buy road materials, but this would be in addition. Uh, down the road, um, you know, master planning. In an earlier year, I guess you can't see that final year there. Let me slide this over. Mobile data collection in an early year for condition assessment. Now, this is a, a program of. Video assessing the pipes, the dollar amount is based on use, u- using forty-four miles of pipe. And trying to clean and assess the condition within a seven-year period. Then we have capital of related costs. MS four, uh, PRP projects, whether it be design permitting, right-of-way easement, construction. Programmed over four years. Construction funding for the Park Hills Drainage Improvement Project in the second year of the program. Lining corrugated metal pipes, the estimate here, it is based on five thousand feet a year. And we have some funding set aside for stormwater inlet repair. Funding set aside for the, uh, partnership program with private properties dealing with stormwater issues, we would need to prioritize them. And then come up with a formula or mechanism to determine the cost sharing. And that comprises. And that comprises the capital portion, and that brings you to your total stormwater program budget. So those are the two tables, and maybe at this point, I'll stop sharing, see what questions we have, and I'll just bring whatever table back up that we need to discuss.
Okay, so anyone have any questions for Dave on those? Lisa?
Dave, I just want to make sure that I'm reading this right, and I don't have, oh, no, sorry, you do. I do have this one up. That, under the program summaries, the cost of service one. So if I were trying to figure out what has been being spent on drainage projects, stormwater projects leading up to the start of this, so, you know, in the last couple of years or whatever, would I be looking at that 380 plus capital projects, or?
Yeah, so it varies over time. So this is actually a snapshot from fiscal, from fiscal year 2017 that we put together in year 2018 while we're developing the program. And I'll try to do another screen share here. Go to screen one. And okay. Are you now seeing an Excel sheet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So part of that came from an analysis of projects in 2017. And I'll have to go to another sheet to show you where these numbers came from. But of the number that you saw, a portion of that came from looking at equipment based on 2017 costs. And then these other factors that you see here, which would be a prorated portion of those budget items, prorated toward the percent of time that it would have been spent on stormwater-related functions. So more comprehensive than what we actually, you know, put as proposed in the budget this year. And then some contracted services and a prorated portion of some salaries. So then if I look at this spreadsheet. So in 2018, based on collecting time sheets and looking at Foreman's Logs, in 2017, 2018 completed and planned. So we, we used either 2017 or 2018 or a combination of both. But these were the, these were the actual activities that we had planned for that year. These were the labor hours that we put into it, the equipment time. And then, you know, that was all summarized and tallied over here. Now, some things, you know, that we didn't include, but, you know, some years, there's a big number. For example, that year, Chestnut Ridge pipelining, you know, there was, there was quite a bit of that. But that's kind of a separate, a separate item. So then, I'm gonna stop my share. So then what, what, what we did, what staff did was provide these elements to our consultant Wood, and then Wood used those to develop the tables that I reviewed with you, the first two tables.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, so the operations are, you know, comprehensive. It included things in there like, you know, street sweeping, roadside mowing. You know, it was rather sweeping as to what we could consider a stormwater, you know, related activity, but may or may not do so, you know, when we actually start programming or developing populating costs in the fund, if that's, if that's what we choose to do. But those were, that's how those dollars were estimated.
Gotcha, okay. I think I had asked one time about breaking that down, but I think we saw in the budget a lot of that breakdown.
Right, so, so we did put some of that breakdown in the budget, but it's, you know, it's pretty clear what it is that we're including, and, and we don't have a lot of the consumables and fuel and uniform. And, you know, we didn't include berm, berm, I'm sorry, street sweeping, roadside mowing.
Okay, so so the current operations are 380, and like you said, that includes a lot. We're adding the new additional, so new additional operational costs would be 250 for a total of 630 in year one.
It looks correct, yes.
Okay, and it
And of the 250, you know, a good portion of that would be the full, conversion of the full-time person, which we said we're not doing next year. And then the, the, the pipe inspection, which it was discussed and was included in the budget because it was felt it was an important aspect, whether or not we decided we were gonna have a fee or not have a fee.
So okay, so the part-time MS4 engineer is listed under year one of the program, under operating, current operating costs. But then it's listed as the full-time under here. I guess it wouldn't make that big of a number difference, but to be specific, that probably should be re, addressed somewhere so that you know that number.
Yeah, I mean, if we were trying to constantly keep this table current with the adopted budget, you're correct. I mean, we have, we haven't done that. We've described the differences, just like down below in line CMP. We did not include or ask for $500,000 in next year's budget. We're, we're doing, you know, maybe, my memory's 270,000, something like that.
I think we're trying to walk a line between the prospect of implementing a stormwater management utility fee and what some of the additional services or components that we'd like to incorporate as part of that program with what we're currently doing. So what you see reflected in the 2021 operating budget is essentially status quo, reflective of our need to make up for that gap in revenue, but is not reflective of some of those additional items that Dave just highlighted. So the, the years probably can be transposed a little bit, depending on when the implementation or if the implementation ever occurs. But I, I think we're just trying to avoid making too many changes and adding to the confusion, I guess.
And that's part of it. I'm looking at this in two different ways. What's been incorporated into this year's budget, based on this, looking at this program summary as year one of this program? And then, because elements of it are incorporated in this year's program, elements are not. So I'm trying to look at it both as year one of the program and also maybe a partial year one of the program, so that I can see how that's gonna change the numbers later on. Because if you look at year eight, which is fiscal year 28, which may not be fiscal year 28, the new operational costs are 578,000. Now, that includes 90,000 for the master plan, but that's something that's, you know, in the other chart, that's kind of spread out a little bit more. So I, I was trying to look at this, compare the charts, but that's really difficult because, you know, program elements are splattered throughout the different cost centers. So it's, it's difficult to compare the two things, but with some, some specific things, you know, you could look at that. So I guess I would back it up then to fiscal year 27. So year seven of the program would be 467,000 in new operational costs. So okay, well, that, that does explain the increase in the costs in the program. So with, you know, like you just said, the 500,000 wasn't requested for that, for that project, for Brackenridge. So do you anticipate that number would change that significantly over the years? So say fiscal year 22, so year two of the program, it's calling for 525,000. It goes up to 700,000 in year eight of the program. So do you anticipate that that number would change that much year by year?
You know, I think that's something that we would discuss, you know, every year with the board in the operating budget, and we talk about it during the five-year CIP. And this is kind of a planning document that we needed to have some basis for building a fee, you know, which we can come back and look at. But with the best information that I have, I think that is a, you know, an aggressive number of 5,000 linear feet a year. I think we're doing, you know, great if we can, if we can do that. We've got, you know, miles and miles of corrugated metal pipe that we have to address. You know, we may not get there for 10 or 15 years, but at some point, we gotta get there.
And part of the context of this study was to look at the components that could be incorporated into a fee structure, not necessarily saying that they should or would be. The advantage of a, of a fee versus, you know, making up the difference or the additional revenue in another form is that this one is, is much more nimble, so to speak. Meaning that, you know, if there, if there's programs or if there's projects that are deferred or that can be spread out over a period of time, we can, we can do that. We can modify that fee structure on an annual basis, if necessary, in order to accommodate the proposed expenditures. But what the Stormwater Advisory Committee looked at, what the consultant looked at, and what staff looked at, was really what are the, what are the things that, the priority projects over that eight-year horizon that we need to start getting on our radar and incorporate those as part of the fee structure? And then they, they kind of worked backwards from that to remove some of those items that Dave noted earlier that maybe weren't necessarily pertinent to the program, although maybe indirectly so. And this is kind of what's left. So, you know, it's still gonna be up to the board, as Dave noted, on an annual basis as part of not just the capital improvement program, but also the annual operating budget, the road tour, et cetera, to identify those, those projects that need to be done and can be done. But, you know, we, we have those on the map now, and it gives us, as Dave said, the basis for, for discussion of either a proposed fee structure or some other mechanism to make up the difference.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If, if we did it, and I don't mean to cut the discussion short, because obviously we'll answer whatever questions you have. If the other item that, you know, was planned for tonight that didn't make it to the agenda, but we do have Elizabeth Tredway, if you were interested, was, was the discussion of the fee, the ERU versus the square footage and this concept of a tiered ERU fee, so that within the housing stock, there's a, a different fee if you have a small, you know, percent of square footage of impervious versus a large percent. We don't need to talk about it tonight. I'm, I'm just mentioning that originally, that was one of the elements that you wanted to talk about. And, you know, Elizabeth is here tonight to talk about it, if you'd like, as you're considering any other questions that you have on the level of service in the program.
If we want to talk about it at all, should we be talking about it tonight? Because Elizabeth is here.
I'll, I'll let Dave and Steve can decide that. I just wanted to make sure you remembered that
Thanks.
that was something at some point you wanted to talk about. And originally, it was tonight, but maybe, maybe it got pushed. It wasn't on the agenda that way.
Yeah.
I would just want to make certain it comes up again, since it wasn't on the agenda for tonight. If, you know, if, I don't know if Elizabeth would be here at, at another meeting. So of course, if we have specific questions, but maybe some folks wanted to show up to participate in that discussion. So I wouldn't want it to be a, a one-and-done on that.
Yeah, I mean, and it's certainly up to the board. If you want to approach that topic, you, you're, of course, it's your prerogative. I, I kind of imagine that being wrapped up in the special meeting the board may schedule for the first part of January to bring closer to a number of these yet-to-be-determined items in advance of the public hearing in February. But again, that was just my initial thought, and you're welcome to discuss whatever you think is appropriate this evening.
Well, I think that I wouldn't mind, given that it's gonna be recorded from CNET, and we can stream it anytime and pass the word. I wouldn't mind hearing from Elizabeth so we can spread out the conversation a little bit. She is here. I, I kind of wanted to talk about that. I am interested in pros and cons of what I see pop up all the time as a very common fee structure in stormwater fees in Pennsylvania, which is a three-tiered residential, then a square footage continuous fee structure for non-residential. So I would like Elizabeth, if she is prepared, to speak to that a little bit, to prepare the board. Thanks.
Well, I would have to say, and, and thank you for bringing this subject forward. I, I was not specifically prepared, which makes me a little uncomfortable because I would like to be able to actually show you images, things that will help you see the difference between the two. But in general, the industry historically started using this concept of the equivalent residential unit. Realized utilities now are almost 50 years in operation in this country. So there is a very long history around the use of user fees for stormwater. And prior really to 2000, the year 2000, the availability, both economically and broadly across the country, of data that would allow for more options in the rate structure itself were simply not available without great expense. I mean, my own community when I was a Public Works Director spent almost a million dollars putting our billing system together. That's not, that's not an expense that you would find most communities wanting to take on, simply to create a bill structure. But the result of it was, we created our GIS system as an end product as well. So there were multiple benefits of that million-dollar, almost a million-dollar investment. But we see today much more sophisticated and much more economically available data to be able to look at the impervious area as the meter, really, that is the foundational principle within these 50 years of history. That we're able to now look at that data in refinement. We're able to look on a parcel-by-parcel basis in much greater detail than the available tools we had just 20, 25 years ago. And so you're seeing a shift in that data availability in communities really outside of Pennsylvania as they themselves are updating and changing their rate structures. As an example, I'm working with one right now in Florida. It's been in place since 1988, and they're completely revamping their rate structure because they have the data available now to do that. So why revamp it? Because the principle that they see lacking in their current rate structure is that the discernment between housing stock over time changes. Footprints we see built, you know, in the 56 you know, in the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, even early 90s, relatively conservative compared to what we're seeing in some of the housing stock footprints, although we're also seeing a lot of value of going back to smaller housing stock with less impervious area. So to react to that change in the industry, we're seeing more communities go to a per-square-foot basis. In fact, if you go Midwest to the West Coast, there are high prevalence of using square footage rather than the equivalency to a residential property. So we see a lot of that use with the tiered system in Pennsylvania. Again, very small communities by size. And the availability of the data that they have is not as not as detailed and up to date as your data. So your data gave the advisory committee and staff, our team, the ability to look at your properties without regard to land use, but to look at them as a homogeneous group of properties that have developed, have impervious area present, and we were able to do an analysis on a fixed unit basis of 1,000 square feet. Where communities are still using the equivalency for residential properties, there is often an interest to break that into tiers, the purpose of which, again, is to create greater equity in the distribution of the the fee that is assigned to the residential parcels by having gradients of the fee. It does not change the rate structure from a revenue generation capacity. It's revenue neutral to go to a tiered system. So we know we have, let's say, 100 residential properties in a community. We look at their total revenue potential within the community such as yours, and we're able then to say we could break those into groups that would represent the same revenue generation capacity, but it would be distributed amongst that revenue group differently. Smaller footprints paying a smaller portion, larger footprints paying a larger portion. So you're discerning the difference. You have to have a factor that allows you to do that. So when we see tiered rates set up in Pennsylvania, because, again, communities have not built the same quality of data that you have available to you, we have to come up with another factor to break those tiers. Because you can't just make it up. If you don't have the actual data parcel-by-parcel of the impervious area, which is typically the case when that rate model is or rate method is chosen, you have to find some factor to put them into groups. And so often, we're asked for those communities working, Radnor was a great example, did a statistical analysis of the correlation between impervious area and the lot size in their community using the sample set, which we did get of their residential properties where we hand digitized every one of those representative sample properties in order to determine if lot size created a high enough correlation of differentiation of the amount of impervious area so that we could put them in tiers. And in Radnor, the advisory committee was very comfortable with that strategy. And so in Radnor, we established their ERU basis with tiers based on lot size as the controlling factor for which house would be assigned to which group. You would not have to do that. You have all that data. It would be much easier to create tiers in the residential properties if you chose to go to using an ERU as the basis for the rates. So that was a lot of conversation, and I wish I had some good graphics to show you, because I think sometimes this stuff is so much easier to understand with pictures. And I'd be happy to do that at any time. I understand that you're planning a more detailed work session around this, and Dave has asked if I would make myself available and our GIS team available at that time. And we certainly would be glad to demonstrate this in a way that you could see how we have used it for other for other communities in Pennsylvania and how we could use that strategy in Ferguson itself.
Thank you so much for that, that clear introduction to that. And I look forward to hearing more about it during our work session. Thank you very much.
Sure, my pleasure. I'm sorry I didn't have the things available tonight.
A quick follow-up on that. Has anyone used sort of the instead of fixed, like 500, 1,000, whatever has anyone used something like the median or the 25th quartile, 75th quartile? So however you want, or one-third, two-thirds. So if you want to divide it up into sort of big, big, big paved areas and small paved areas, for lack of a better term I can think of now. If you just use the median, you can do that. So you got what I'm saying. So is there the disadvantage of that is that it would potentially change and include some calculations that can be done. But I think we have the data to do that and generate the bills correctly.
I think if the question you're asking is, can you take the residential stock and divide them that way? The answer is yes, of course, we can with you. Again, the other communities, we've not been able to use in the impervious area quantity itself, because they're using the equivalent residential analysis because they don't have the details, you know, per hundred square feet, whatever. They don't have it in their residential properties. So we can show you all of those examples of how those things have been calculated. When we use a statistically-based sample to set the residential rates, we do use the median value of the residential properties that are in the sample set. So we use a statistical analysis to determine what size sample sets necessary. And we then hand digitize the sample set of residential properties to come up with what the equivalency is for residential billing units. So we can show you all that if I if I had got it back together, I could show you how we use that methodology. It is typically not applied to the non-single-family properties. Those are typically billed on a per-square-foot basis, even in a tiered residential basis.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
My pleasure.
So are there any other questions for tonight? And this is just a discussion item tonight, so we don't have any any action to take, but it's a sort of a continuing discussion we'll be having for another couple of months, so. Well, if I I don't see any others right now, so I think I'm going to thank Elizabeth for being here and helping us work through this. And I am then going to ask that we take a five-minute break.
Yeah, Steve, quick question. I'm sorry. Do we make a specific call for resident input on this matter? I'm not sure. Were we going to do that?
Yeah, actually, we can. Thanks for.
Sure, just to be clear, because it's already getting a little late and we're a little out of it. So I don't see any hands. Okay.
I think the
Fair enough.
Okay, seeing none. Thanks for reminding me to.
Sure, thank you. Okay, see you in five.
So I think we'll take a five-minute break here and come back shortly. Are you back yet, Lisa? Yes.
Sorry, I was here. I forgot to turn my camera back.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to check. Okay, so we're continue on then. The next item is review of the draft workforce housing ordinance amendment.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Jenna to introduce the item, and it's been advertised for public hearing for December 14. The purpose of the discussion tonight is just to get any additional comments or questions that the board or anyone else may have in advance of that public hearing, so that any potential changes can be worked in prior to the second meeting in December.
Okay, thanks.
Although I'm looking now, and Jenna may not be.
You took half my agenda language.
Oh, there she is. Oh, sorry.
Yeah. So provided the agenda, the draft of the workforce housing ordinance as advertised for a public hearing to be held on December 14. The board is requested to review the draft prior to the public hearing, although no action is required on this item. This ordinance would be applicable to the following developments: the nutritional town development and the Terrace Street Gate zoning district that result in 10 or more residential dwelling units, renovation of a residential structure that results in 10 or more additional residential dwelling units within five years, and conversion of a non-residential property to a residential property that results in 10 or more residential dwelling units within five years. Staff also reviewed section 2771610B for the method of calculating the fee in lieu for a unit owner and is recommending the following method, and it is essentially would be the same method or same what we would require of a applicant or developer who built the units, tried to sell them. They couldn't rent or sell them, and it would be 60% of the current fee in lieu at that point in time. I think the recommended amount that we had in the original draft, there are just too many unknown variables. And I think this is more equitable in that treatment. So if there are any questions that the board has, I'm happy to answer any of them.
Thanks, Jenna. Does anyone have any questions for Jenna? Laura.
Steve, I don't know if there are questions for Jenna per se or discussion about the ordinance. Are you right now just asking specifically for questions?
No, anything. Yeah, anything we have right now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jenna. I think I have about six things about the ordinance. Question slash comment kinds of things. Just trying to get to my first one here. Okay. Under accommodations, on page five. Jenna, can you orient me here in the ordinance for under accommodation? This just applies to for sale units, or this includes rental units?
It would be BI1, one additional equivalent unit may be added to the sending development for each for-sale workforce housing unit provided.
So developments that provide built workforce housing dwelling units.
when the zoning district, well, it would be in the TTD, not at the SIP level.
I think the overall general master plan, that would identify how many workforce units are being proposed in this development, et cetera, et cetera. And then with, in each SIP, it would then be identified how many of the units of the total are being brought online during that SIP. So it's not specified in the agreement, then, the phasing of it? The agreement would require that the phasing is throughout the whole development. I don't think we would ever want all workforce housing units to be built at phase one, because we're not going to have the ability to fill all those units right away, especially a large development. So the requirement would be that they are phased throughout the entire all the SIPs, so we have the best opportunity to get as many qualified households into these units.
Thank you. Okay, my last question comment. Page nine, it's about fee in lieu. So here, in this, in this ordinance, for sale dwelling units, the developer shall pay 60% of the original per-unit fee in lieu to remove the unit, to become a market rate unit. But rental, I don't see a fee in lieu paid to remove the unit.
That was discussed at a previous board meeting. Since we aren't providing a bonus unit for rentals to be built, it was essentially there wouldn't be a fee required. They got nothing to build those units. They might take advantage of the parking if it's a multifamily dwelling unit. And otherwise, that wasn't included. I believe it was the October.
I think in the most recent version before this that I had, there was a fee in lieu paid.
Yeah, I think it was on the October 19th. Maybe I was looking back at my notes to make sure I had everything, and included in that agenda was no fee in lieu for the rental units if they were unable to rent them, because we weren't going to be providing any bonus units for those units.
But I think the presumption is that in a multifamily dwelling unit and rental units, because there's no limitation as far as percentage of those units that a developer or builder is permitted to do as fee in lieu prior to construction, in all likelihood, most of those proposals are going to come with a 100% fee in lieu option, so meaning that a developer is just going to say, look, we're going to pay you the fee in lieu and not have to worry about building the workforce rental units. In the event that there is a development proposal that does include onsite for rental multifamily units, those units are going to be built with the understanding that they're going to be occupied by somebody whose income qualified or a tenant whose income qualified. So in the event that they can't be placed or that a tenant can't be placed in those units, at least what's being proposed is in recognition of the effort, I guess, that was put in on the front end by that builder to try to market those units, to try and build them, to try and, and on the part of the Housing and Land Trust, to try and get occupancy, and then just realizing for whatever reason that there is no market for it, we can't place a tenant in it, and that there'd be allowance to remove it from that program at no cost to the property. So that's kind of a compromise almost between what we expect will happen and, you know, for those few developments that may opt to build those onsite multifamily for rent units at the workforce, in the workforce housing program.
Thank you. A thank you for all your, your attention and your responses. I think the only one of those things that I would like to put forward for the board to discuss other than perhaps talking about some numbers with fee in lieu, is the idea that after building and marketing, that we wouldn't be asking for any fee in lieu with rental dwelling units. I don't think I would have had that position. I don't recall taking the position that I don't know, that I would support that. And I think this goes back to what Lisa has discussed about incentive versus required. So if we're requiring either fee in lieu or build and sell and stay affordable, there should be some sort of renewal of the system if it's taken out of the affordability realm. I think everywhere else, we really utilize that philosophy throughout the ordinance. They are getting parking as well. I would argue if we want to encourage that, that the reward would be something more like our fee in lieu structure would be that original calculation that Jenna did, if you want to pay fee in lieu before you build, and then the current, well, just previously, I think it was 75% of that that fee in lieu post-build, and that would be kind of your reward. So that's, that's what I'm thinking about in terms of balancing that incentive versus accommodation. Trying to encourage building and renew the system all at the same time. So I guess I'll just put that out there for any kind of feedback. Thanks.
I can give you just a general commercial real estate pro forma background. Any opportunity that a developer has to pay fee in lieu, they will pay fee in lieu. They don't want to build these things. They don't want to deal with the additional requirements and checks and whatnot. So if we're going to allow an applicant to pay 100% fee in lieu for rental units, and we're going to have an additional 60% fee in lieu be paid if they can't rent the rental units that they didn't have to build, they could have just paid to begin with, that's just going to solidify their answer of not building the rental units at all. They're not getting anything to build them except parking. And if we think about parking in a large development with 100 units, there, that's 10 parking spaces. It's not much.
Didn't, in the, just the most recent iteration of this ordinance, we were asking that very thing every time we read it up until now, right? And it just changed that we would be.
And that was, the draft that was viewed in the last board meeting was not an updated draft. And that's when I went back to the October 19th meeting and included in my agenda language, based on the previous meeting, I'm assuming in September, that we weren't going to require the fee in lieu for rental units that couldn't be rented, because we aren't essentially giving the developer those bonus units to build rental units. We're taking that off the table. I mean, either way, I mean, you could say applicants who opt to build the rental units, even though you can pay all of them in fee in lieu, if you want to take that risk and do it, and you're going to have to pay 60% of the fee in lieu if you can't rent them, they're not going to build them.
But, but we're already saying that people are going to pay a fee in lieu for this anyway.
Yeah, exactly. So it's kind of like null and void. We can leave it as is, or we could add the 60%.
Right, it's really as much as, and I don't have the same background or expertise that Jenna has in this, but for me, if I'm thinking about this, approaching it from a developer's perspective, and, you know, there may be value to me or my pro forma or my market analysis in building onsite rental affordable units. I know Jenna probably would argue, well, that there probably is no incentive for that, but in the event that there would be, and I say, well, look, if I build this and it doesn't move, I can't get it, you know, I can't get a tenant for it, I can't get occupancy. It's really no skin off my back. I can just remove it from the program at no additional cost. I've tried, you know, for whatever reason, the market just didn't support it. I couldn't get a tenant to be placed. And then, you know, we move on and we find somebody at market rate.
Sure, I'm using the same kind of logic. I'm saying, I'm a developer. I want to develop somewhere in the TTD. I'm going to, I'm going to do rentals. The ordinance requires either fee in lieu or build and fee in lieu. I decide I'm going to build, and the fee in lieu level that I pay if I want to remove them from the market is less than the fee, like by a fair amount per unit, less than I would pay if I didn't build them. So it's kind of the same logic.
It's the year of carrying costs of trying to market and rent those units, and I agree. Keeping it as is, the, having no requirement for the fee in lieu for rental dwelling units. As a developer, I think they'd be more likely to take the risk of trying to build them, because there is no skin off of their back. If they can't rent it, they tried, they gain a parking space. Well, that's what they get for doing that. So I feel if I were looking at this, I would be more likely, and affordable rentals are needed. So I think they'd be more likely to try if it was no fee in lieu, if I tried to do this, because we're not giving them anything to do it anyways.
Yeah, I understand definitely. I mean, it's a good conversation. There's also then what we do with the fee in lieu. If we know we want affordable rentals, but in a typical development, it's going to generate fee in lieu dollars or build, if they're going to pay fee in lieu, then we know that we're going to invest those dollars in other kinds of things that aren't these buildings.
I will throw in one thing from sort of a cynical point of view, and maybe this doesn't doesn't apply, but suppose I want to build 100-unit apartment building. I'm marketing it to undergraduate students, and I build 10 fee in lieu units. And lo and behold, nobody wants to rent them, because their neighbors on both sides are undergraduates.
Right.
You've just saved your fee in lieu. Now, I guess the question would be, would the costs of trying to market it be bigger than your, be big enough to your savings?
40%. Yeah.
Or if people do actually take you up on it, then you're stuck with running at that rate.
Yeah. The managing unit yearly updates.
But if we know nobody's going to want to live there, then why are we even allowing that kind of thing to happen and us end up with no fee in lieu? Instead of charging fee in lieu for rental housing, it, it, it doesn't like, if you want to build rental housing, then you have to pay fee in lieu, because we know that what you're building isn't going to be occupied, is how I'm thinking about that. So because we know it's not going to be occupied, we know it will be through the fee in lieu investment that we generate affordable rentals. We can guess that. So we're, it's, it's like, why even include it in the ordinance if it'll result in not that? So I don't know. I would like to propose that change. I'm not quite sure how to handle that changing. And I'd like to hear other supervisors' thoughts on it.
I mean, I think you could handle it the same way as with the for sale. It's just a 60% fee in lieu if it doesn't. If you don't don't market it, I. Rental affordable units. I know Jenna probably would argue, well, that that there probably is no incentive for that, but. Uh, in the event that there would be, and and I say, well, look, if I build this and. It doesn't move. I can't get it, you know, I can't get a tenant for it. I can't get occupancy. It's really no skin off my back. I can just remove it from the program at no additional cost. I've tried, you know, for whatever reason, the market just didn't support it. I couldn't get a tenant to to be placed. And then, you know. We we move on and we find somebody at market rate.
Sure, I'm I'm using the same kind of logic. I'm saying. I'm a developer. I want to develop somewhere in the TTD. I wanted, I'm gonna do rentals. Uh, the ordinance requires either fee and lieu or build and fee and lieu. I decide I'm gonna build and. The fee and lieu level that I pay if I want to remove them from the market is. Less than the fee, like by a fair amount per unit, less than I would pay. If I didn't build them. It's kind of the same logic.
It's the year of carrying costs of trying to market and rent those units. And I agree, keeping it as is the. Having no requirement for the fee and lieu for rental dwelling units. As a developer, I think they'd be more likely to take the risk of trying to build them. Because there is no skin off of their back. If they can't rent it, they tried, they gain a parking space. Well, that's what they get for doing that. So I feel if I were looking at this, I would be more likely and affordable rentals are needed. So I think. If it was no fee and lieu, if I tried to do this, because we're not giving them anything to do it anyways.
Yeah, I understand definitely. I mean, it's a good conversation. There's also then what we do with the fee and lieu if we know we want affordable rentals, but. In a typical development, it's gonna generate fee and lieu dollars. Or build, if they're gonna pay fee and lieu, then we know that we're gonna invest those dollars in other kinds of things. That aren't these buildings.
I will throw in one. Thing from sort of a cynical point of view, and maybe this doesn't. Doesn't apply, but suppose I want to build. A hundred unit apartment building. I'm marketing it to undergraduate students. And I build ten fee and lieu units. And lo and behold. Nobody wants to rent them. Because their neighbors on both sides are undergraduate. You've just saved your fee and lieu. Now, I guess the question would be, would the costs of trying to market it be bigger than your be big enough to your savings? Or if people do actually take you up on it, then you're stuck with running at that rate.
The managing net yearly updates.
But if we know nobody's gonna want to live there, then why are we even allowing that kind of thing to happen and us end up with no fee and lieu? Instead of charging fee and lieu. For rental housing, it it. It doesn't. Like, if you want to build rental housing, then you have to pay fee and lieu because we know that what you're building isn't gonna be occupied. Is how I'm thinking about that. So. Cause we know it's not going to be occupied. We know it will be through the fee and lieu investment. That we generate affordable rentals. We can guess that. So we're, it's it's like, why even include it in the ordinance if it'll result in not that? So I don't know, I would like to propose that change. I'm not quite sure how to handle that changing. And I'd like to hear other supervisors' thoughts on it.
I I mean, I think you could handle the same ways with the for sale. It's just a sixty percent fee and lieu if it doesn't. If you don't. Don't market it. I. I mean, I I I can see the the argument that the only thing I get out of is a parking lot, but. I can also see a way that that could be used to get out of the fee and lieu, which is bigger than a parking lot.
So I would just. Say I agree with that. With that. To add the fee and lieu for rentals for that opt out. I think the sixty percent, is that what the for sale is is at? Yeah, that I think that's, I think that's fair. I mean, why leave the the potential for using that loophole?
I I don't know.
So I would agree with that.
Yeah, I I don't know. Do we need a motion on? We actually don't need a motion to do this, do we, or?
I think so.
I would suggest if.
Yeah, I was just trying to think in terms of where the advertising, so we'll be readvertising it, so we should do a motion if we want to.
I can make that motion. I move that in. Fee and lieu of rental dwelling units, item II on page nine of the currently advertised ordinance. That the rental dwelling units fee and lieu shall. Mirror the for sale dwelling units fee and lieu in I above. Sixty percent of the original per unit fee and lieu. To remove the unit as a workforce housing dwelling unit.
Okay, do you have a motion a second? Any further discussion on? That amendment?
So I want to clarify something, and I'm sorry, this is sort of like probably when I have tr- some trouble with numbers and. So. The language in now what I proposed to match. The language in the for sale dwelling unit and rental dwelling unit. Sixty percent of the original per unit fee and lieu. So there is a discount, right? Okay. Thank you.
There's a discount. The only difference is that a property or developer, prospective developer could elect to pay. Fee and lieu for a hundred percent of those units of the rentals as opposed to the to the owner occupied where they'd be limited.
Yep, thank you for that reminder. Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on the change? Uh, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye, aye. Opposed, motion carries. Are there any other? Questions or changes for the? Lisa.
Thank you. Could we go back to the accommodations? For a minute. I just want to make sure that this writing is, yeah, that the writing is what we're intending because I. Left the previous meetings with the understanding that the accommodations would be for for sale. Units. And I know that I had seen a previous version of this where. That language was under I, so developments that provide for sale built. Workforce housing dwelling units or something to that effect. So that's not in there now. The only thing that says for sale. Is under number one. Just correct me if I'm missing it.
I think it was more just. It was a replication of what is already within accommodations for any for sale built workforce unit. Whether it's onsite or offsite. That sending development, in that case, if it was offsite, would be receiving the bonus units. Cause we could include in the ordinance three times within accommodations under. Build offsite or build onsite three times. But I think that was just part of the. Um, updates of making this shorter accommodations applies to any built for sale workforce unit.
I'm not following. So the. The multifamily dwellings can exceed, even if they're rentals, they can exceed the maximum height. By a story. So that rental is getting. That accommodation.
Not for rentals, only bonus units. For sale workforce housing units were the only things that are eligible for a bonus unit. So if there was a for sale workforce unit in a multifamily dwelling unit, they could then utilize the maximum height.
Okay, that's what I'm not finding. Maybe you can just point me. To where this is.
The multifamily, that would be two. May exceed the maximum height set forth in underlying zoning district by one additional story. And then the amendment that we are doing to the Terrace Streetscape District includes that in it. And solely for the accommodation of the bonus units.
Yeah, if you look at number one above that, it says each for sale workforce.
Right. But that's separate from number two.
But but then number two would apply. I mean.
Does it? So that's just not how I'm reading it. Does anybody else read it the way I'm reading it?
I'm right now a little bit lost, but I think I'm reading it how you're reading it. I can't. I can't orient myself for like I'm at accommodations or I wasn't. Now I've lost my place completely. But I wasn't, yes, I was at accommodations. So where? Where in the ordinance? Does it discern what rentals versus? For sale units get for accommodations? I meant B on page five.
That's included within that section, B. I one, only bonus units can be added to ascending development. Or they're building onsite for each for sale workforce housing unit. That's holistically for this whole ordinance.
So the confusion is the just how it specifies sending development. But when you read it, you added built on site. So I one is read built on site or to sending development as the case may be.
Yeah, any built for sale unit.
We clarified under B I two, under multifamily dwelling units may exceed the maximum height. By one additional story. Some language that says as as provided or is for for developments that provide. You know, owner occupied for sale units or something like that. We can specify in that second bullet point that that accommodation is only eligible for. Onsite owner occupied units. That that may clear up some of that ambiguity.
Yeah. It sounds like that's the sticking point is just making sure that that only applies to for sale units. And I don't think we need a motion for that because that's just.
Yeah, we can add, we can add that in. That's fine. Yeah.
So it would need to read. Something to the effect of multifamily dwellings. That. For sale workforce units.
Yes.
May exceed the maximum height.
Right. And I think it's implied in there, but as you pointed out, it. Isn't explicitly stated, so.
Yeah, it's a good catch. I I think as I read it again.
So, yeah, I would just kind of. Reiterate what Laura had said, you know, I think part of the problem with this is it's. Language is being adapted from what had been incentives for the T S D and bonuses for required. Built units in the TTD and. It's difficult to reuse this language because it was intended for something different. You know, I can, I I. Still think it would be preferable to not have these accommodations for something that's already required, but. Limiting it to for sale units, I think does. Let the township retain some control and. You know, I think that's a, I think that's a compromise that works here.
Anything else?
I think it's just a clear, a matter of clarification. I don't think it's necessarily the case that we were sort of trying to transpose language from the Terrace Streetscape District. But we can, we can make sure that for.
Mm hmm. Sorry, I'm losing you. You faded out, but I think I got what you're saying.
Oh, that's okay. All right.
Okay, is there anything else? This item?
I would suggest, uh, given the amendment that was made a moment ago, uh, that we. Reschedule the public hearing for January fourth of next year, so it gives us time to readvertise.
Oh, okay. So you need you need two weeks on this one?
Yes.
Okay.
As a zoning, as a zoning ordinance amendment, that's correct.
Okay. In that case, uh, someone will care to make a motion to reschedule the public hearing for January fourth.
This is Patty. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second Laura.
Okay, so I have a motion a second to reschedule the public hearing for January fourth, twenty twenty-one. All in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Jenna, thanks for all your work on this ordinance.
Yeah, no problem. I actually love sitting down and going over it with you.
Well, thanks for taking that time.
Yeah, no, my pleasure.
Okay, so there is no other action on this. We've already taken. So now we go to a continued discussion Whitehall Road Regional Park.
Uh, thank you. So. Just to the right item here, the regular meeting on October seventh. Uh, the board had an opportunity to review some questions that were forwarded by the Cog General Forum at the September meeting of Cog. Uh, related to the development of phase one of Whitehall Road Regional Park. When the meeting was concluded, it was determined that there was insufficient information to provide a response to. Uh, some of the questions that were posed or the options that were presented by uh, Cog and and by Cog staff. Uh, so those questions were forwarded to the uh, park authority director and the Cog executive director. Uh, for their consideration. There were other municipalities, uh, State College Borough College Township that also had some additional questions for clarification. So in response, the Cog provided a matrix, uh, which is attached to the agenda for your review. And this is just the continuation of that discussion from the October seventh regular meeting. Uh, for an opportunity for the board to provide any um, direction or response to. Uh, the four options or 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 questions that were posed to it by Center Region Parks and Recreation. On the development of of phase one of Whitehall Road Regional Park. And I know we have some folks from Cog here, Joe Vigilone, Eric Nordenberger are still here, and so is Pam Salatangas, Parks Director.
So I guess the. I'm not sure exactly where we're heading with this myself, so.
Can we review the question about the the debt? Is it's really more than one question, but it's in it the it's in a attachment seven B.
Okay.
The option one and option two. Should the authority and municipalities refinance all debt? Keeping current debt schedule and debt payment the same. And that's how both start out. So I'm gonna focus on that part of the sentence, so.
There we go.
Thanks.
So the question was basically. And if only utilizing the current loan. Should we refinance everything as one package or?
So my question about it, when it says debt schedule and debt payment. That is the duration of time that the municipalities are paying that debt? Is that right?
Is. Is Joe here to explain what those two options are?
And both of those options have the same first part of the sentence, so that's. Like, I want to understand if those two options both mean. The pa- payment schedule, which means duration, does that mean duration? And the amount. Debt payment, I'm reading as amount.
They just unmuted me, so I'm able to talk again. Uh, basically what it means is we we fi- option one and two basically say refinance the debt. Option one would be saying we're gonna refinance the debt and let's say we come back in the debt service, we're able to say three hundred thousand dollars. We put that three hundred thousand dollars back into the park. Option two says. Okay, we can go back, refinance that debt and say three hundred thousand dollars. Okay, well, we'll put give that back to municipalities.
Thank you. I under, I actually understand the second part of the sentence in each option. It's the first part. So you are finance expert. You understand what that means. I know that when I refinance my home. I don't have the same debt schedule. Or debt payment, actually. But you're saying we're gonna refinance all of the debt. And we're not gonna pay anymore and we are not gonna pay any longer. Is that right?
Okay, and I'm see, I think I see what you're saying right now. I think um. Between them, we just got a little bit mixed up in one of the sections as I'm looking at it. Now let me pull it back up since Dave brought it back down. I had it up on my screen. Should the authority and municipalities finance all debt pools and parks? Um, approximately three hundred thousand dollars in savings. Keeping the current debt schedule and debt payment the same, applying the three hundred thousand dollar savings to Whitehall Road Regional Park budget while securing some additional funding for the park project. So that first one basically says instead of taking the savings. We'd apply the savings back into the park.
Right, I understand that.
Okay, the second one, should the authority municipalities refinance all debt approximately three hundred thousand dollars in estimated savings? Keeping the current debt schedule and debt payment the same, providing savings back to municipalities while securing some additional funding for Whitehall Road Regional Park. I think that we need to take the middle sentence out of that between the two commas, keeping the current debt schedule and debt payment the same. We would be reducing the debt. We would be changing the debt schedule to provide the savings back to municipalities unless. We would option, we we would keep the debt service the same and refund it all in advance in one year. So what we could do, if you could take this down, Dave, so I can see what's in there. Just, I was gonna look at everybody, I was gonna look at, I was gonna try to look at everybody with where it is. The option two is saying basically. We would refinance the debt, take the three hundred thousand dollars in offset. Minus i- 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 and refund it back to municipalities and then keep the debt payment the same. So would it almost be, you could get the money upfront in terms of that refinancing.
Okay, so I'm get, I thank you, but I just. I'm sorry, I need to ask my question in one more, one more time in a different way. So right now, I don't want to focus at the difference between option one and option two at all. I want to focus. at all. I want to focus only on option one and I want to focus only on the first half of the sentence in option one. So I don't want a difference at all.
Okay.
All I want to understand is, are you saying that if the municipalities and the authority refinance that debt, that we will not be extending the loan terms? Like, we won't pay any longer. The 10 years is the 10 years.
Under op, under option one.
Either.
What's that?
At, we, we will, debt schedule and debt payment, we will pay no longer and we will pay no more is per payment. Is that what you're saying?
In option one, yes. What you would, and this is based upon estimates from the, um, bond, the, the investment advisor at this point. So under option one, it would basically be saying, we'll put $300,000, we'll, we'll refinance a loan and we can borrow, instead of being able to borrow five million doll, we have $5 million outstanding, we could borrow 5.3 million dollars and that will get us $300,000 for the park. Uh, get us, um, $300,000 additional for the park to put into the park project and our payment schedule would remain the same. That's what option one says.
And, and payment schedule is the amount and the duration of payments that we have to make?
Correct. I think if there's a later option that would be extending it or, you know, that was being just, you know, changing in the refinancing along that lines, but option one does not do that.
Nor does option two.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for bearing with me, everybody.
So I guess the question is, with that explanation, do we want to try to answer the question or? To came from, or make municipal comments on either of those options?
And just real quickly, Laura, option three would be the one where you'd be extending the term of the loan or the dollar amount of the loans?
I'm sorry?
Option three would be the one where you'd be extending the term or the dollar amount of the loans. If you're, if you would want to borrow additional money, that would be option three, not option.
As in, I could suggest that under option three, you mean?
Co- correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Two do not say we're going to change anything beyond what we just talked about there.
Thank you. Got it. Got it. Gotcha. So, I mean, I feel like I approached this a little bit differently and I, um, I wouldn't mind deferring this until the 14th. I know we have a lot on the agenda then, but as far as I understand, there's not a big rush, um, to have this conversation. And I would like to have some other conversations. I mean, I know it only is like one meeting, but, um, I don't know what the Cog timeline is.
Laura, we could even extend it into January without missing any deadline that they need to make decisions.
Really?
I would, I think so. Uh, could I ask Eric or Joe?
I mean.
Agree with that?
We could just, I could just, anyway, let me, yes, I'm fine with that too, but, um, my just, my thought is that maybe we could have some other conversation, um, about parks and, um, I guess my approach is, is a little bit different here because I have some outstanding questions about the relationship between the municipalities and Cog and the authority and, um, I, I wouldn't mind giving it a little more time to have those, those questions answered, uh, before we, before we comment. That's my thoughts.
Did bring Pam Salakangus. I saw that she had her hand up in the chat, so.
I just wanted to give you guys another, uh, timeline perspective. As we discussed, uh, back in October, we were going to go forward with some bidding. And so we do have bids open on the park project right now. Those close on December 15th and our, our plan is to be able to bring back updated budget information Ja- in January and go through the whole committee process, being able to report out if those bids came in low at budget or higher than budget so that we can actually update the need, uh, for the park. Because as an example is if something were to come in under budget and we were able to apply the funds we have to something that's unfunded and stretch those dollars, we'd be able to give you a better picture of that in January to say, well, now our, our actual need is lower. And, and we'd have some other, hopefully some other ideas about that once those bids close. It's going to take us a while because this is a multi-prime bid project. So we're just going to give a very quick report out to the authority in December, but bring back a fuller picture in January and our bids are good for 60 days. So while we have a little bit more time to discuss and answer questions, we are hoping to get some direction in January because we would need to make some decisions on bids. Thank you.
Thanks. I guess part of my outstanding question, which really isn't on our list of questions, is, you know, our board has talked a little bit about the difference between a tournament facility and providing for the needs of fields regionally and, um, I guess that's partly why I say my approach is a little bit different here. Like, I kind of see this particular project as being so underfunded and I appreciate the talk about timeline for bids and I'm certainly interested in hearing that information, but, um, just looking around the region and seeing that we have 52 parks and the fact that we couldn't kind of target the production of field space, I don't know, the equivalent of eight fields or I believe it was, um, over something like 20 years. I don't know. Was that 2006 that study was done? 14, 15 years? We just have so much invested in parks. Uh, I don't know. I, I just, I wouldn't mind seeing, providing for the need for fields through our regional network of parks that are owned by the municipalities as opposed to making a tournament facility just because we really don't seem to have the dollars that it takes to make an adequate tournament facility. So that's kind of like what I'm saying when I'm thinking about a different approach and hoping we have more time to talk about parks, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I think that we're probably going to have to make some decisions before we have a regional discussion of that level. But I, I mean, I think, uh, as far as the, you know, waiting till the bids come in and see what the financing is, you know, going to be required, that could be done early in January. I think.
Sure.
I think that would be, the discussion you have will follow when we see, you know, follow seeing those numbers, but. Cause I'm not sure that the region as a whole wants to have that discussion until we see numbers based on what's exists now, so.
Yep. I think we, we, I think we had made four of the eight that we needed or something, but yeah. So do you want some kind of motion to bump this or?
Uh, I don't think we need a motion. I think we can just revisit this, uh, beginning of January.
Sure. I'll make a note to put it on either the fourth or the second meeting in January.
Yeah. And then maybe you can coordinate with, uh, Pam and Eric and make sure we're getting the information they need in time and decide which meeting based on that.
Uh, yes, will do.
Okay. So I think that, you know, once we have the bids in, we'll give a little more information and further discussion, so.
Thanks for the clarity on the, um, the loan stuff, Joe. Appreciate that. I think I finally got that all down.
Yeah, it does. It is a little different than the way you do your refinancing on the house, I think, so.
Hmm. Yes. It doesn't always translate. Yeah.
Yeah. This is kind of alone. So, okay. So the next thing is, uh, under new business, consent agenda consists of two contracts, accepting the treasurer's report for September and scheduling of two board member requests for future meetings. Does anybody, uh, want to pull any of those out or make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'm moved to accept the consent agenda. This is Lisa.
I'll second it's Laura.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, approving a sewage facilities planning module for the Campbell subdivision plan.
Thank you all. Ask Jenna to introduce that.
Thank you. Uh, provided with the agenda is a copy of the resolution advertised for public hearing approving a component for a sewage facilities planning module for the installation of an on-mot sewage system at 150 Farmer's Way to service a 2,800 square foot residential home. In accordance with Penciling Facilities Act 1966, the township is required to adopt a resolution establishing that the submitted plan conforms to all applicable municipal ordinances and regulations governing the treatment of sanitary sewer.
Okay. And I guess my first question would be, does this meet all those?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause I certainly don't know. So anyone care to make a motion?
Yeah, I present it, um, move that the Board of Supervisors adopt, uh, the resolution.
I'll second Laura.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this one? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, so I need to ask if anyone from the public cares to comment on this. And seeing no public comment, we'll move to a roll call vote.
This is presented as Resolution 2020 dash 34. Mr. Ninni?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Next is the cottages, the State College Final Plan Residential Development Plan Amendment.
Thank you. I'll turn this back over to Jenna to present.
All right. State College Apartments LLC has submitted a request for amendments to their approved final PRD plan, um, to include modifications to the lighting plan. That includes two additional wall sconces, a new exterior door to the front of the clubhouse, a sidewalk access from the edge of mailbox area to that new exterior door. Um, they removed all covered parking structures. That was an option for additional, uh, rents and it wasn't really utilized very well by tenants. So they are opting not to include that in the rest of the development. And they removed fire pit and gas service on the eastern part of the site near building pad number 12 and 13, and they relocated two bicycle racks on the eastern part of the site. The township staff has reviewed the requested modifications and is recommending approval per section 27302 of PRD post-final, the procedure to amend the final PRD plan after it's been approved, is to request approval from the Board of Supervisors. Uh, I believe, uh, John Sepp from Pantera Engineering is also here, um, if the board may have any additional questions as well.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for either Jenna or John?
I have a question. It's Laura. Um, the lighting plan to include two additional wall sconces, do you mean two in the whole plan or like two per building or unit or, 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 sorry, what?
John, do you want to?
Yes, it's two in the whole plan.
Okay. And so you said the covered parking is not being utilized this semester? Is that, um, how much, like, how much are you removing? Does it say, sorry?
We're removing all of the covered parking. There were 13 different, uh, locations. They had leased only two stalls at the beginning of September after a full year of advertising them as an option.
Any other questions, comments? And do we have a motion? Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion. A move that the Board of Supervisors approve the cottages, the State College Final PRD Plan Amendment.
I send you it second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor? Signified by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is a review of the draft heritage tree ordinance.
Uh, this one's going to be led by Dave Modricker, who's hovering above the stratosphere of the Chesapeake Bay Peninsula.
Thank you, Dave. So this is a, a happy ordinance and, um, it was started when the, uh, tree preservation ordinance was started. It was broken out. So, you know, this started some years ago at the tree commission and credit should really go to the planning director and the arborist and the tree commission for putting it together. Uh, it was a collaborative effort. It's, uh, an amendment to chapter 25 to include a new part heritage trees. The intent is to recognize the voluntary protection of landmark and important trees. It can either be a heritage tree or a significant tree, establish a process to nominate those trees. So it starts with the tree commission, um, and works its way, you know, through the arborist to the board. If it is, uh, designated as a her- heritage tree, has to meet a little bit more stringent criteria in terms of the size of the tree and the age of the tree. Um, and the key takeaway, if it's a heritage tree, is that it ends up being maintained by the township, even if it's on private property and there's a deed restriction, you know, placed on the property owner's deed saying that, um, you know, it won't be removed. If it's a significant tree, it doesn't, you know, through that whole process, but it gets recognized. And then there's, uh, maintenance responsibilities established, um, for the trees. So I, I, there might be a little bit of wordsmithing or grammar that needs touched up, but I think, um, I think it's ready to go subject to your review and approval.
Okay. Any questions for Dave or comments on the?
Many things. Thank you for all the work.
You're welcome on behalf of Jenna and Lance and the tree commission. Oh, and Dave P. Dave was involved, right?
Dave, we gotta work on your taking credit for other people's work. The whole thing operates. We'll talk tomorrow.
All right.
Okay. So this is. a motion then to authorize the advertisement with public hearing. Anyone care to make a motion?
I, Laura, move that the Board of Supervisors authorize advertisement of a public hearing on ordinance amending chapter twenty-five trees for Monday, January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Present it second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have the review of the draft twenty twenty-one Ferguson Township Schedule of Fees.
Uh, I'm gonna ask sentries to introduce this item since she put together the amendment.
Thank you, Dave. The schedule of fees for the township is adopted, it's adopted annually by resolution of the Board of Supervisors and describes all fees for township services, violations and other items for which the township collects revenue. Right with the agenda is a copy of the draft twenty twenty-one Ferguson Township Schedule of Fees. The changes are prepared for you and track changes to review and have authorization from the Board of Supervisors for the public hearing on December fourteenth.
Any questions on the fee schedule?
Thank you. I don't, um, I don't see the track changes portion of the fee schedule. But like I'm seeing a PDF that has draft watermarked.
Uh, I will take a look at that, um.
I'm, I personally am not necessarily concerned about it. I have two, two places that I want to look at, but when you mentioned that, I was just, um, I don't recall seeing track changes.
Okay, I will take a look at it and my apologies if it did not get attached correctly. I will follow up with an email and update our, um, our agenda packet on the website.
Thanks. Um, my question, probably both of them are maybe for Jenna, Jenna and Dave Provoca perhaps. Um, one is about, excuse me, the workforce fee and lieu. Um, it's number five and six on page eleven. Um, these numbers were, I'm gonna call them the discounted numbers, but these were not the first numbers that you calculated in terms of um, assessing value for these units that are being produced. Is that right? It was like, wasn't it seventy-five percent? Or sixty percent of the first thing you calculated? I think the eighty-six was more like one twenty-three or something like that.
I think the original calculations that were done in eighteen, I believe those were the original numbers that have been thrown around. Um, the beauty of the putting this into the fee schedule is that that's updated annually, so given COVID and the updated numbers we got, the amounts decreased. And that's why keeping these numbers up to date is gonna be really important, and they will reflect the current economics and market that's in the region, or actually in Ferguson Township, it's that specific on what we're utilizing. And then the, um, current numbers that we have that were in the last board meetings agenda packet, it would have been seventy-five percent of those twenty twenty numbers was staff's recommendation, which gets you about eighty-six thousand for a single-family attached detached, and then fifty-three thousand for a multifamily unit.
Okay, and then the change we just made in the ordinance, um, just said then, well, we were talking specifically about the multifamily rental. Um, oh, and in this document, it's six workforce housing fee and lieu and then seven multifamily, but that really is just one number and it's rentals, right?
We don't differentiate between rental and for sale, uh, the way that we do the calculations. It's by land and by the type of building development, so the price per square foot for the international construction cost that code tracks for us. They essentially define the type of buildings by multifamily, which are your multi-stories that you see downtown, um, and then your single-family attached detached, single-family homes, duplexes, um, lower density models, and that is how they get their construction cost.
Okay, thank you, Jenna. So should I be interpreting this then, like, we just made those cha- that, that change in the ordinance, the workforce housing ordinance? And we talked about, our category was not really so much about single-family and multifamily. It was about for-sale and rental.
Hmm.
But here in our fee schedule, it doesn't say for-sale and rental.
Hmm.
Yeah, it's the same.
Yeah, it would be the building type that we'd be looking at. So if the developer, it's all based on what the applicant would be proposing to build. If they are proposing a hundred-unit multifamily unit, there might, if they're all rentals, they'd only be required to match what they are providing, which are rentals. Um, so if we give Pine Hall as an example, they have some for sale, some rentals, and they're all equally dispersed throughout. It would be the same type of ratio mix for the workforce unit.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my other question. This came up during budget time was about billing for planners' time in plan reviews. Did that show up in the fee schedule anywhere?
It's not currently presented in the fee schedule. We do have those numbers available. Um, Eric, maybe if you, are you go down there? If you want to present, uh, what those figures worked out to, we, we calculated the, uh, time, I believe the average, uh, cost for plan reviews, work that into.
Oh, yeah, that was basically, um, Jenna's wage times two.
Right. So we do have that, um, uh, on hand. If the board wants to incorporate that in the fee schedule, we can, uh, fairly easily. We've not done so in the draft that's presented this evening.
Okay, and, um, if I wanted to make a motion to discuss, so the board can discuss that, um, where would you want me to propose that be included? Or just generally is enough?
You can just make a general motion and
Okay.
But let staff figure out where it would go.
Okay, um, and I guess I'll, I'll propose that we include in our fee schedule um, cost recovery fees for land development review.
I'll second. This is Patty.
Okay, motion a second. Uh, any discussion?
Um, I was curious, based on the motion that I made, would this also include any kind of review for those, um, cost recovery for any review of the minor, I forget what we've called it now.
Changes to a PRD, post-final amendments to a PRD.
No, but that's been a while since I heard that. Um, the, the thing that's happening on West College right now, the minor.
Minor alterations.
Okay, so would this fee schedule proposal that I've made just cover land development plans, which would not include minor alterations? Or would it include alteration, minor alteration plans?
So commonly, uh, it would be for land development applications. So we, we wouldn't collect escrow or, or assess fees uh, for minor alterations or things that are, are predominantly handled by the zoning administrators. So if this change were reflected by the board, it would be for the land development process.
Okay, that's what I was hoping. Thank you. That, I don't have any other really discussion other than we've talked about this. Um, I think it makes a lot of sense, um, to have that cost be covered by, um, the developer that's kind of generating that work. Um, and I think it promotes efficiency in that process, which I've heard can be an issue. Um, not, not our staff, but just having folks be responsive, um, so.
It can be. I mean, it certainly, I think, uh, um, the, the tendency or the bottleneck, if you will, in, in the review process tends to be more in the pre-application part of the land development process than it does, you know, post-submital. Um, my, you know, call it a professional philosophy or, or whatever you might want to characterize it as, has, has always been that, you know, it's a, it's a public service for planning staff to review land development plans and, and provide their comment. It's a little bit different than a stormwater engineer that we contract with or that we have, um, you know, spend time on their review that we do assess those fees for. Uh, it's not, I mean, it's certainly permissible for the board to assess fees for land development reviews by planning staff. Uh, but it's always been my opinion that, that, that's a public service that we do as part of, as a matter of course for, uh, you know, our municipal services. So, you know, it's up to the board. I, I don't necessarily think that it will have a tremendous, uh, in- impact on efficiency of land development reviews, because once that land development plan is submitted, it's just a matter of, you know, staff reviews it, goes back to the developer, they make their modifications to comply with whatever comments or, or deficiencies are identified in that submittal, and then they resubmit, uh, where we really tend to run into, um, as I said before, bottlenecks or, or inefficiencies is pre-submittal when we have, you know, numerous conference calls or, you know, meetings in some cases when we can meet and life is normal again, uh, with development, you know, with developers and engineers and their design professionals to kind of hash out details of the plan prior to them actually submitting. So I don't think that this would address that because that, that's a, a separate discussion that relates to pre-submission um, requirements and, and escrows, et cetera. Uh, but, you know, it, it may address some of the cost recovery relative to plan reviews after submission.
Thanks, Dave. That does make sense that, that, uh, it would be very early, earlier would be, um, there would be a lot of stuff to work out, so that does make sense. So.
Yeah, we, you know, we struggled with this over the years. I mean, in fact, and, and, you know, going back probably five or six years or so, we, we were looking at a process for pre-application, um, escrow and, and, uh, the recuperation of, of, you know, costs incurred. Uh, the, the problem is you, you just, you run into, um, maybe more obstacles than you intended to when you deal with invoicing, you know, potentially applicants who have withdrawn their plan or never actually submitted. What incentive do they have or what, you know, what teeth do you have to make them pay for that review?
Yeah.
So it's a complicated issue, but we, we, we do what we can.
Yeah, I could see it would be difficult to hold somebody accountable that there was no official process actually started for, so. I'll just limit my motion to land development plans. Um, point noted on the public service. Um, I wouldn't, I mean, I'm open to discussion. I'm ready for just a vote. I think maybe whatever, if supervisors have an opinion, they're ready for a vote. We can do that.
Yeah, does anyone else have any comments or questions as far as this motion? It appears not. In that case, I will call for vote. This is a motion to add land development or fee for land development, uh, for review.
Review, yeah.
All in favor? Signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And so that'll be in, in.
December fourteenth resolution.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a board member request for general tax increase. Uh, this was, did I miss one?
Uh, well, I just, uh, uh, sorry. Just go back to you.
Oh, we, uh, yeah.
I think there was a, a requested motion to authorize advertisement of the resolution for the public hearing on December fourteen.
Yeah, that was a separate motion. We voted there, so. Okay, so we need a motion to authorize the public hearing then.
I, Laura, move the Board of Supervisors authorize a public hearing on a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-one schedule of fees for December fourteenth, twenty twenty.
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Okay. Have a motion a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now move to board member request, general tax increase. Um, this is a request that I made during the discussion of the stormwater fee. I've had several people suggest to me that we should just use tax revenues to cover the stormwater uh, costs, not use, not have a separate fee. Um, I am basically just proposing this as an alternative for us to consider would be a uh, increase in the real estate taxes of two-point-four-two-two mils, which is a doubling of the current real estate tax that would provide approximately the same amount of revenue. Uh, it would still leave us with the lowest uh, property tax in the center region. Um, I see advantages and disadvantages either way. I'm, I'm not, uh, you know, the, I think the stormwater fee has an advantage of or two advantages I see. One is it attempts to link the, uh, revenue to the source of the need. And the other is it gives us a lot more, uh, flexibility in terms of, uh, things like the, uh, uh, you know, credits and, and things that we can, uh, have flexibility on. Um, the disadvantage is that some entities will be paying a lot more than others, uh, and, you know, it does affect tax-exempt organizations such as churches, schools, and Penn State. Uh, a real estate tax increase is very simple in terms of how we manage it. Uh, it's very simple to calculate. It's, you know, just a rate change. Um, it affects different parts of the public differently than a fee, the, the tax fee. So what I'm proposing is that we prepare an ordinance for a general tax increase or prepare a public hearing, basically, for the same night as the stormwater fee, giving us a chance to look at one, the other, or neither, if we choose neither, uh, all at one time. And would also give the public a chance to comment on those at the same time. I would propose that probably when we discuss the stormwater fee, if we have a special meeting, that, that this would be part of that discussion as well prior to the public hearing. So that's, uh, essentially at this point, and I'll go ahead and make a motion, and we can decide if we want to do it, is that, uh, the Board of Supervisors schedule a public hearing on a proposed real estate tax increase for February first and direct staff to prepare an ordinance to consider the increase of that date. Uh, one other thing I do want to point out is that I'm requesting this to take effect in two thousand twenty-two, which is the same thing we would be doing with the, uh, uh, stormwater fee. It would not be, uh, uh, an increase in twenty twenty-one. So I guess if anyone has a second, we'll have discussion.
I'll second. It's Laura.
So we do have a second. So is there any discussion on this motion?
Well, Steve, I'll just add that we've heard a lot of feedback during the stormwater fee discussion about a request to consider alternatives for this A lot of people have suggested property tax. I think that if we were going to go with the tax increase, it would be, you know, a general tax increase, it would be property tax because if you do a comparison, our property tax is so rock bottom. As I've said in other discussions about this, one of the reasons for that, it's very strategic. I'd like us to be very careful about that, but I think that's kind of the point of having this conversation sort of in tandem with stormwater fee conversation is that those kinds of differences of impact are able to be explored, but still keeping the subject separate. So I think it's being responsive to one of, one of the main pieces of feedback that we've heard through the through the stormwater discussion. And it's something I've also said kind of all along with the stormwater fee discussion that we should make sure that everybody understands that this is about the larger question of revenue generation and not just the specific question of stormwater fee, although that's, I think, a good viable strategy for revenue generation. But so that's it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Lisa?
I have a question first. When we were talking about the COG formula and how that's calculated. So that uses our earned income tax revenue.
No, it uses our base.
Okay, so that's what I would.
The differences from one year's value to another. Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Okay. I guess I'll just say, you know, I wouldn't be in favor of a tax increase for 2022. And my other concern about this is it puts another important discussion into a virtual format. So it's highly likely that we'll still be meeting on Zoom in February. So that would be my other issue with having that discussion then.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, the motion is to schedule a public hearing for, let's go back to the date here. February first, 2021. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion carries three to two. Okay. Next is a board member request, park maintenance agreement and participation. And I believe that is Laura's.
Hi, thank you very much. So most of the narrative is found in the attachment in your packet. And really tonight, it's kind of a long write-up, but the synopsis of what I wanted us to look at is to request some information from Ferguson Township staff and our regional park agency, Center Region Park and Rec. And the items that I wanted to look at are enumerated in the attachment. And to sum up, it's really about services to the park, including mowing, refuse and recycling, and rentals of amenities such as pavilions and fields. So the reason I wanted to look at this information is to just assess whether it's feasible or desirable to bring the remaining park maintenance and operation responsibility under the control of Ferguson Township. And I don't really think we can answer that question until we have more information. So this is just a request to ask staff for that information. In the attachment, you'll see that really it came through the Park and Rec Comprehensive Plan to look at the division of responsibilities between, I guess, the park authority, the park agency, and each of the so-called participating municipalities. There was a document generated during the comprehensive plan. Dave Modricker has sent the board the current MOU that exists between, I believe it was the Authority Board, the language in that document, and the municipality. And I think that we can kind of put this conversation off until we got the information. If we, as a board, wanted to move forward with getting that information, we could put this second part of the conversation off about what might be contained in an MOU. I just kind of want to take it one step at a time. So I guess I would just ask if the board would consider requesting directing staff to gather this data for us. And that's it. Thanks.
Do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I Laura move that the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors direct staff to gather the operational data laid out in the Attachment thirteen regarding parks, operations and maintenance from Ferguson Township and the Regional Park Agency.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
I have nothing further to add. Be happy to answer any questions.
So I would like to know from the staff, where, you know, where does the data reside? How much of a work it is? I would just like to know the entire project, what we are undertaking a little bit more.
I think Dave can probably answer as far as the maintenance and operations perspective goes. The programming is probably something that's a little more nebulous at this point. We'd have to try to wrap our heads around and see if we could begin to compile some meaningful data on that respect. I think it would probably be inaccurate to really look at the regional parks program data because it's likely that managing our own program in-house would be a different cost. Not just staff, but equipment and et cetera. So I don't know if Dave, you have anything to add from the operating O and M standpoint, but I know Pam is, Salakangas is still here in the audience. She has her hand up at the board wanting to entertain any comment on this. They could.
Yeah. If, Dave, did you have anything?
Yeah, in terms of developing estimated cost to bring some of those O and M functions in-house, is that the question?
Yeah, in particular, like the mowing and like what public works would be handling, mowing and trash.
Yeah, I could, I could certainly put an estimate together. I think it's an exercise I did go through some years back, so I would go back and refresh that and just make sure I'm looking at the right areas and which which parks we're talking about and then, you know, do an analysis of the equipment and manpower needs.
Thanks. I know we've been talking about this for a while and bit by bit, we've moved in this direction of being able to hone in on those costs and I appreciate all the work that you've done thus far, Dave, to start to look at those things.
Okay, Dave, if you want to bring Pam on, she had a.
Sure, you're live.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for just a few minutes. I just had a couple of comments. I just want to share a little bit of concern that when when this consideration took place for Half Moon Township and they choose, they chose to remove themselves from the park, the regional Parks and Recreation Program. One of the biggest implications right off the bat was that their residents became non-residents of the Center Region Parks and Recreation Agency. So basically, non-residents of any services or programs that we provide. So Half Moon Township residents right now are paying a larger or a higher fee for their seasonal pool pass, their general admission for any program registration, whether that's summer camp or a regular program, also for pavilion rentals, field rentals, et cetera. So there is an implication to your residents and I hope that all of you through this exercise will certainly consider that because that's a big change. It also implicates, there's also implications for the other municipalities. So that would re, that would leave four municipalities remaining in the regional cooperative program. And that also affects your relationship with them is that they are then going to have to pay higher fees in order to keep the regional program going. So those are two big implications right away. And one of the other things I wanted to share with you is that you not only have to consider your operations, parks, operations side, you have to consider the administration side. And so earlier today, as I was thinking through this process, I have three pages of services we provide to your residents, to all of the participating municipalities that will require administrative staff time as well as your public works department. And it's a really long list because we've never put that list on paper of all the things that we provide. I know you look at the big picture, particularly parks, maintenance and mowing, trash removal, recycling, et cetera. But there is so much more that our agency does provide that I would hope at some point you would give our agency a chance to have this discussion with you. It is a big list and again, your residents may want you to stay in this program because it does affect them. Just day-to-day pavilion management during the season of fielding phone calls, fielding reservations, collecting insurance, fielding special event requests, scheduling fields. It is a lot of work. And so that's why I'm encouraging you to look at the administrative side, particularly Dave. If Dave is the one that's putting together staff costs, it's both sides of your agency. You know, public works as well as administration. So I don't want to beleaguer the conversation tonight because it is very late, but I did put a lot of ideas on paper. There's a lot of regular maintenance, general maintenance, as well as specialty maintenance, and then additional services that our agency provides for Ferguson Township because of the type of parks that you have and some of the amenities in them. So at some point, I'd be glad to sit down with staff to just talk about the admin side in particular and also the additional stuff you may not realize. Dave Magicker probably has a really good idea of parks ops, but it would still be good to review that list. I would hope that Ferguson would not want to leave this this regional cooperative program, you know, in very, very layman, general terms. There's a services that we provide that are consistent across all five municipalities. And while your COG modified formula does change a little bit from year to year based on the pieces that make up that formula, which has nothing to do with Parks and Recreation, as we know, you're essentially paying for a fifth of those general services. And now you're going to bring those completely under your umbrella solely. So your costs could increase in certain areas. And so that's just something that I would hope it does keep costs down for your residents because you're paying into the regional program. But that's really it. I just wanted to offer some insight. I'm not going to go over the three pages worth of insight I wrote down today. It is very late, but I appreciate the time and consideration to speak.
Pam, I wanted to, I take, it is late, but I wanted to take a minute to respond because this is what I, what I hope is that this does initiate a dialogue. And this is really partly why I tied the MOU option to this agenda item. As you know, from our work together on the Park and Rec Comp Plan, this is a very complicated issue with a very long history. The items that you've brought up tonight are very important and things that I've talked through with some of the other supervisors on a an individual level, just in terms of what could possibly be done to make sure we mitigate any negative impacts and make sure that we're looking at what would be most beneficial for our residents. I do, I do appreciate hearing more about the services that are provided by Center Region Park and Rec Agency. And I want to learn more about what the agency versus the authority controls and how Ferguson Township can have proper representation at the authority level. So I do hope that this is kind of an opening of that conversation. And I appreciate your willingness to stay late and talk about it.
Yeah, I hear you, Laura. And I think the last thing I'll offer is you mentioned the comp plan. And I think that that's why I was most surprised to hear that Ferguson wanted to investigate this now because our comp plan did come out with an action plan. It's over 100 items. And as you know, the authority is conducting work sessions monthly to work through that action plan. And so we have a lot of these conversations planned because we know through the comp plan exercise, there are things that need to be improved. And we also have that governance piece. So I'm trying to remain hopeful that this isn't putting the cart in front of the horse because this work is planned to be, to be done. But, you know, I understand Ferguson's individual needs as well. And so, you know, hopefully we can work together on this.
Thanks, Pam. I appreciate that. And really, like, if you look at it, it's really synced up with the authorities' conversation. And when I told Steve I was going to introduce this item, I said a big part of that is that the authority is having this conversation about the MOU and the division of responsibilities. But it's not, it's unfortunately, as we know from the COG structure, there's actually no place for elected officials to have that conversation in COG. So the, you know, it really, if we want to have a conversation, we have to prioritize it in our own municipality. So it really is, it really is about making sure that conversation happens by the elected officials here in Ferguson. So in tandem with the authority. So, thank you.
Okay. Is there any further questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, this is a motion to direct staff to research or request information and report back to the board at a future meeting. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? No? So the motion carries. Next is staff and committee reports. Finance Committee. Basically, our last meeting, we reviewed comments from municipalities. Basically, our last meeting, we reviewed comments from municipalities on the budget and started the process of figuring out the priorities for Finance Committee actions in 2021. That will, as Joe mentioned earlier, that there was a prioritization by the Finance Committee members of fourteen points or fourteen possible actions. We'll be discussing that on Thursday and sort of setting an agenda for next year for the committee. Executive Committee, it's always the easy report. We did all that at the COG meeting. And Public Services and Environmental Committee.
That was.
Yeah, I was muted. Yeah. So the, yeah, the Public Service Environmental Committee met. And so we primarily discussed two things. I'll mention the easier thing first, which is that there will be a small increase in the, in the garbage collection cost. And that's, that's actually sort of counterintuitive, but because our, our amount of garbage has gone down. So essentially, I think companies pay by the amount sort of tonnage that they generate and so on. And so they are now paying less. So it's basically the fixed cost, which is the residential folks will have a slight increase. Not, you know, a few dollars, I think. So that's, that was one thing that was discussed. The other thing that was discussed was the reorganize, you know, given that there will be a climate action and sustainability committee, how do we reorganize the responsibilities of the, the PSE, Transportation and Land Use and Public Safety Committees? And there was this suggestion essentially to consider land use, transportation, and public infrastructure collectively. So that they, there is a proposal to do, to have a land use, transportation, and infrastructure committee. The, if you look at the agenda, it sort of lists what are the issues and the questions that this committee would, would address. So, yeah, if you have any thoughts on this or would like to get involved or find out more, you can, you know, send that to me and I'll handle them at the next meeting or contact Shelley or Eric and others to get, get information about that. There was some presentation, a brief presentation by Pam Adams on the Pennsylvania's participation in the Regional Greenhouse Initiative. And that's open for public comment. So that link is in the, in the agenda. And if you are interested, you can go into the comment system and present and, and give your comments. So, so that's about, that's all that, that was discussed. And that's all that I can remember. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Next is Transportation and Land Use.
Thanks to Prasangit because he saved me from having to say a lot of that because we discussed the exact same thing today. It was our only agenda item was reviewing the committee reorganization. So I'll just touch on the stuff we talked about from the TLU side. Jim May had a great presentation. I'll try to get a copy of his slides that he showed and send them to everybody. It listed kind of the, the what, what each committee would do as it's envisioned right now. So it was interesting. And under TLU, which would be TLU and Public Infrastructure, was land use, transportation, sewer, water, stormwater, and some other infrastructure things like broadband. One thing that the committee wanted added was affordable housing. That wasn't specifically listed on there. And it's something we, we talk a lot about. Jim May kind of went into what's, we all know some of the things that have prompted this reorganization, but some new things that he added were some of these shifts being accelerated by the pandemic. So our work and education and shopping habits changing and adapting maybe faster than they would have to these new different ways. And one thing he said was, you know, we'll look maybe more closely at mixed use developments. So do we really need that kind of retail space when people are not so much shopping in person? They're not eating out right now so much. They're picking up and bringing home. So it was a, it was a really interesting way to look at that. And yeah, I'll just say that we did kind of emphasize also the broadband and looking at that as infrastructure and, you know, really pressing forward with trying to make some, make some improvements. You know, we've talked even here, just in our Zoom meetings, about how it's a challenge in some of these outer areas. And even within the State College School District where we think we're all covered, we're not. And, you know, you can, it's kind of hot, this remote learning situation that we're in right now. For those who don't know, we're in it right now. It's really highlighting where those gaps exist, and it's really, really a critical need. And, and the committee agreed with that. And, you know, we've talked about maybe communicating with county commissioners and really just kind of trying to make some, make some movement on that. I did ask Jim what he was thinking in terms of stormwater because, of course, that's going to pique my interest when somebody says stormwater. So he was just kind of saying, well, it's a regional issue, you know, and it's something they wanted to look at. He said, the multi, what did he say? Multi municipalities, the coordinating group that facilitates stormwater. I didn't get into it, but I think he's talking about the Conservation District and MPDES. I, I think that's what he was getting at. I can clarify. But he was saying how the municipal, Dave and Dave probably know exactly what.
There's an MS4 Partners program that consists of all the agencies that have MS4 permits.
That's what I didn't get.
That may be what he's referring, I don't know if you're certain.
Okay. He was just saying that this group might want to have joint meetings with that group. So, and, and/or maybe staff would to, you know, further that dialogue. So yeah, I guess that's about it.
Okay, thanks.
I, I watched that educational gap today with gym class. If you ever want to watch third graders do virtual gym class, that will keep you entertained. Sorry.
It's fine. So I'm sorry, I know it's late, but really intrigued by the whole committee slash what was originally COG reorganization process. And then just, so I'm on the Public Safety Committee, and our charge is so direct, and it links directly with COG programs in a very neat way. So like you can draw a line between the Public Safety Committee and code, Public Safety Committee and Fire Protection, Public Safety Committee and Emergency Management. There's a COG program, there's a COG agreement, and there's a COG committee. Boom. It's so straightforward. When the Public Safety Committee, when it was asserted that the Public Safety Committee should look at police, policing services in the region, there was a lot of pushback and myself included stating that although it's an issue of interest in the region, it is absolutely not a COG program. And I just, I'm finding it interesting that as we progress through this committee restructuring process, are we asking that question of how does this relate directly to a COG program? There's a lot of COG committees, talk about a lot of stuff. But each of those committees are staffed by many, many staff, and it costs a lot of money to operate that. So I hope as we move through this process, we make sure that we're continuing to use the same scalpel that we're using on Ferguson Township on COG, when we're talking about resources and requisitioning those resources to support the structure that we're evolving. So just leave that comment there. Thanks for indulging me.
I'll respond just really, really quickly. Like I said, I'll get those slides and forward them because public safety was one that didn't, I don't think had any changes underneath it. And there was a lot of discussion about keeping the committees focused. So that there is always going to be overlap, but to know where that overlap is and encourage communication, but to have a clear goal for each committee, you know, clear lines of responsibility. For instance, when I said sewer and water would be under this new TLU, that would be the way it was explained today. So say like zoning and physical systems would be looked at at the TLU if that were to come up. And then environmental aspects of those things like source water protection or nitrogen, I don't know, beneficial reuse, I guess, would fall in the middle. Those things would go to be looked at at the Climate Committee. Those were kind of, those were my suggestions. Like, is this how that's going to be divided up? But that was absolutely an issue. And then there was another item at the end that, you know, they're looking at the climate action and farmland preservation aspects in those issues at CRPA. Looking at those, they're focusing on utility scale solar, which I had brought up before that we talked about. They're going to be constructing, constructing a regulation toolkit, not a model ordinance for municipalities. And that's kind of maybe what you're talking about a little bit, like how does, how does some of these regulation toolkits and model ordinances relate back to a certain program? You know, you can really go down a lot of different roads and, and you know, explore and write about different things, but it's, it's just going to be key as things get bigger that we keep people focused. And like you said, you know, have, have clear lines of responsibilities and relationships.
Next, we have the Climate Action and Adaptation Technical Advisory Group. You muted, Dave.
Yeah, that's just included for reference. I, I didn't get a chance to attend the, the most recent tag meeting. We had a meeting of the Climate Action Committee for the township this afternoon, just talking about and the report that's going to be forthcoming to the board, hopefully early 2021.
Thank you. Spring Creek Watershed Commission?
Right. So, yeah, so we, the Spring Creek Watershed Commission, which was the meetings. So there was one meeting where there was, somebody came in, let me go, sorry, I don't have the this is November 18th. Okay. Yeah. So this was the one where the, the main thing was a, a talk by Rachel Brennan where she was talking about this thing, you know, growing essentially duckweed and using that to clean up the water. And supposedly somebody, you know, a researcher has, has done this. And they have a company now which goes and does this. So it's basically the duckweed grabs the nitrogen and the phosphorus from the water, which comes from the fertilizer and the manure. And they have gone to places like China and so on, and basically cleaned up places at a fraction of the cost. And just, just today or yesterday, there was a news article that she has got a $1.7 million grant from the NSF to actually study how that could be used to limit nutrient pollution that goes into the Chesapeake Bay. And actually, this duckweed, she mentions, has, has protein content which is high. And some, some company has made like food out of it. So you can sort of get a snack out of that. Now, of course, if it is, it's if, I, I don't know, but they're not suggesting that we do it on our own sewer and manure and then eat the same duckweed yet. But at least it's a way to get the nitrogen and phosphorus out of, out of the water. So that took most of the time. And then there was the general talk about the One Water Report and talk about the Education Committee for topics for the, the next, next year. That's, that's all we had.
Thank you. Next, we have the CCMPO.
Yep, thank you. The first thing we talked about was the State College Area Connector Project. That's the Route 322-144-45 project. They had had a virtual public meeting and just kind of went over some of the responses that they got to that. Then we went over the immediate schedule for 2021, and they're anticipating virtual meetings for the first half of the year. We then talked a little bit about the strategic plan. The committee had before expressed support of pursuing that next year, some of the issues that they've got on the list are staff responsibilities, changing regulations, funding, and then emphasizing environmental goals and multimodal priorities. And they're hoping to get some outside help on this, maybe someone from Penn State to donate some time and, and help them get that going. We had reports from CADA and the Center County Office of Transportation, the two transit providers in the county. This was a report on their performance and assets reports, which are now going to include safety performance reports. That we had some updates on that and different parameters that they have to use to set goals for themselves for safety. The county commissioners did note that they purchased for para-transit vehicles recently, and they are all going to be equipped with a mister that can be used to disinfect the vehicle at the end of the day or the end of a trip. I'm not sure which one they're, but to routinely be disinfecting the vehicles. That was interesting. We then reviewed the annual safety performance targets. The goal is to reduce fatalities by 2%. That's a statewide goal. And then all the MPOs set their goals or adhere to state-provided goals and that all adds up into the state. So we went through some of that. And I'll skip some of the details, but they, one interesting thing was that they use a screening tool to highlight areas with high incident rates. I don't think there are any in Ferguson Township that I saw on that list, but that was interesting. There was one in North Atherton. It seemed like there were a lot on the better pike. So that's and then some near campus. So the, the emphasis on safety is just broad throughout the organization and PennDOT requirements and federal requirements. So they're considering making a safety subcommittee. And then also, you know, just looking at safety aspects of different projects. So as the township is looking at different projects on those roads that would, that would concern, you know, our, sure, Dave and Dave already know this, but you know, just thinking about things in terms of safety improvements is what we need to be keeping in mind. PennDOT and therefore the. therefore the, um, the MPO are, looking at projects and prioritizing projects much more on a data-driven, um, policy than had been before, which is good. Um, it'll, but you know, you have, it's not just arguing for your, uh, for your project anymore. You have to have the data to back it up. So, um, so just things that we can consider as we're, um, moving forward. Uh, the next thing was funding, which, um, I've mentioned before is just a major concern, um, at the state level. And that trickles down. So they said there was an $8 billion funding gap statewide. So, um, one number they gave, uh, said that the revenue loss was a little bit less than earlier had been anticipated. So I guess that's, that's good. Um, PennDOT is actually undertaking a study to look at different funding options. Polls on different roads. Um, you know, it's, it's kind of bleak. So, um, so they're looking at different, at different things. Uh, Teresa Lafer goes to the National League of Cities, meetings and often shares either at this meeting or at TLU what they're discussing there. Um, she's on their transportation committee and said how, uh, at that level, they're already talking with the new, um, the Biden administration, the incoming administration about funding to, uh, even down to the, MPO level. So, um, they're hoping for better communication and, uh, ultimately more funding. So, um, that was about it. Sorry for the long report, but it was a robust meeting.
Thank you. And then we have the managers' report.
Uh, given the hour, I'll just, uh, leave it as written. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to respond.
Public Works Director.
Follow Dave's lead and just add the only thing I may not have mentioned in my report is that we have an RFP out currently for a photovoltaic, system for the Public Works Building in the form of a power purchase agreement. That's all I have.
Great. And Planning and Zoning Director. Or is there a question or? No, I guess not.
Uh, I will echo, uh, what the Dave's said. Um, the addition of, we have another steering board application for the, water authority due to the, um, construction and realignment going on, on, um, 26 and 45. They, the current bridge that's there, um, they have to move it, realign it, and it will be in a floodplain. So they're getting variances from that part of our ordinance. That's it.
Lisa.
Just a quick question. Um, I have had communications about the, uh, the brewery at 1004, um, and then the hotel, which was interesting because I had asked, you know, I had asked questions about this being a minor alteration plan. So I just wanted to clarify because this came up earlier, uh, in this meeting. That plan at 1004 West College won't come in front of the board, right? The one we had comment on at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
So, because I think it was communicated to Wes that it would come in front of the board, but it won't come in front of the board. So, um,
Right.
Hear that up. So, uh, okay.
Anything else before we adjourn?
I would like to say thank you to the staff members, Dave Modricker and Jenna and Dave Paboka that came, to the, um, Hain Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee Meeting. In particular, having the conversation about the streetlights. And I just wanted to say, thanks for all the support on that project and for your time and your effort there.
Yeah, thanks for inviting us. It's a good group.
Okay, with that, anyone care to adjourn or?
Yes.
Five more minutes.
To adjourn.
I get to tomorrow. We are adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.